Calendar 2015-2016. Mrs. Cataldo read some comments given from the survey. Professional development days in February break were discussed. Under enrollment of the children of school department personnel, which was a first read of a policy that we developed. In the first paragraph, "The policy will allow the district to ask the parent or guardian to return their child to their home district so the child can be properly serviced." The way it reads here, just for the audience.
To their home district.
"The policy will allow the district to ask the parent or guardian to return to their home district."[42.48][42.48](Laughter). I don't think we want the teachers to be leaving it so that their kids can go to school in the district. And under communications at the end, "Dr. Leeve attended the first meeting about the John Smith Landing Celebration." And at the end of that communications section, Mrs. Cataldo presented a resignation letter for Michelle Simon Fawnfield. It's spelled F-O-R-F-I-E-L-D, but it should be F-O-N-F-I-E-L-D. Also, she is resigning because she accepted a position in Boston. They will have a temporary substitute until they replace her. The word temporary is redundant. So if you could take that word out and just say they will have a substitute until they replace her. And that's all I have for now.
Okay.
But some other night I might watch it again.
Please refrain.
Don't worry, I will refrain.
Okay. So we need a second to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. As amended, do you want to say that?
Aye. Approved as amended for the discussion. Okay. And then we have a motion to approve the March 5th, 2014 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2014.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yes. Under superintendent's report, Senator Hedlund's name is spelled wrong. It should be H-E-D.
Where is that?
It says, it is a motion.
Oh, it's the second time we missed the name.
Right. Mrs. Estino to rearrange the agenda to accommodate Senator Hedlund and Representative Garrett Bradley. The senator's name is misspelled. And under where the senator and the representative were here and presented to us, Senator Hedlund said the Senate is taking up the budget discussion the week after Memorial Weekend. It should say the week before Memorial Weekend. And then the section that Representative Bradley, Senator Hedlund and Representative Bradley spoke about lottery receipts being up $20 million. I think we should capture that because maybe we could get a little bit of that. And then under middle high school flooring replacement project, motion by Dr. Leeve to approve the recommendations as described in the middle high school flooring replacement project.
Did you say it's up $20 million?
$20 million.
Yeah, yeah.
I had to listen to that twice. And the middle high school flooring replacement project, but it shouldn't be project. The recommendations are described in the middle high school flooring replacement. I missed a word on that. But I mean, we can leave it. It doesn't make any difference in the content. So that's what I've got for now.
Motion to approve the life improvement. We need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th, 2014 school committee meeting as amended. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So we have here today the graduation start time. As everybody knows, we, two years ago, were asked to push the graduation back to the second Saturday in order to accommodate the schedule for the music circus at their request, and we've done so. And we were scheduled to begin at 1:00, but we have a potential problem that may arise. And so we're looking to the committee for direction and for approval to possibly adjust the start time to as early as 10:00 a.m. in the morning in the event that some of our teams, we have the potential to lose 11 students to state finals that are now taking place on Saturday, June 14. And although Mr. Ford is trying to accommodate it and get it in the afternoon as late as possible, it still doesn't give the students enough time to go to graduation, get on a bus, and get to Boston. However, if we are given the leeway to be able to move it up in the event, we should find ourselves in that predicament, we either have to figure out how to call an emergency meeting, which unfortunately we won't know until the, I believe, the 12th of June.
To the, that week.
Right. Which won't give us enough time because I have to post and then bring you together. It'd be Thursday or Friday, the day before the graduation. We feel that's unfair to families. What we would rather do is alert families there's a potential that the start time could change if we find ourselves in the states on Saturday, June 14. That will impact 11 students in the senior class. But we know that we can't just move it, and so we're bringing it to the committee for discussion, and we're recommending to the committee that we be allowed to make that change. But you would have to vote to allow us to do that, and we would forewarn families tomorrow if that is a potential. And then if it actually should come to pass, we would then alert them immediately. But we do not know if our team should make the final, what time that will be scheduled, and we need some flexibility.
This has been a problem in previous years. I mean, I know in Ross's class some.
Was with one or two track students, but this past year the MIA restructured lacrosse and added basically another round, and then they booked the state finals for boys and girls the same day at Boston University. So it's going to be a great day for them, and they moved it back to the 14th. There's only very few schools that graduate, you know, in that weekend.
Well, we're a week later too now, right?
Yeah. So we're a week later. So they both kind of came together, this all came together this year. This is a brand-new system for them, a brand-new format for them. And so that's, you know, the first thing is we've got 11 players.
Potentially.
Potentially, if we make it. We still have to win two more games, three more games to that point, but it's going to happen pretty quickly if it does. So we just wanted to, you know, answer any questions you might have or concern.
I don't have a problem with going earlier. It would have been a problem to go on later because people are apart.
Right.
But you swapped it the other way, that wouldn't be good.
I think Mr. Ford's trying to make it so it's the afternoon.
Yeah. I also serve as a tournament director for tennis, so we're in the same meeting with all the spring directors. And I was able to, right in our first spring meeting, ask the directors all, put them all in the room, can we be guaranteed a later slot if we have graduation? That's one of the things, as a director, I move all the tennis matches around problems of graduation. So they guarantee me that, I asked them what would be best, and they said it would be better if we gave you a later slot, and probably better for you if you graduated earlier. So, you know, they, we came together way back in April, April and March about, you know, that idea. So it'll work with us on it.
I support it, you know, having that option, as long as, you know, communication's going to be crucial. But I would like to put it on agenda, like, in the future, for us to really talk about this late graduation date. It's just not working. I'd like to, the principal to weigh in on it because so many different things. I mean, the kids have way too much time. I know I came up with community service projects for the class and stuff like that, but the, you know, I just think two weeks, you know, between the last day of class and graduation is not sustainable in the future as a good idea.
Right. Well, actually, we.
And I don't think that principal would want that for, I've heard, to go on like that.
We actually had been speaking about it, and that was something we were going to recommend it be on the agenda as early as next September. Not only to talk about whether it's that weekend or not, it might just have to be pushed up a couple of days. It might be that we have to come out of Saturday cycle after all these years of tradition because we're not sure. And if we do that, we might change our venue altogether.
Yeah, and I don't think that's a problem.
That's a lot to talk about. We need to start in September.
Right. I think the safety of their kids, to have, and for us to be responsible for these kids which, for two weeks after the last day of class is, I just, as a school board member, I don't recommend it for those, for the school board because, you know, we are the policy, you know, makers, and the more I thought about it, the, you know, and the word on the street, and all the social stuff, humbug that I'm hearing about plans and stuff, I just don't feel like being responsible for the kids for this long a period of time.
And I have heard the same exact thing.
Yeah. So in retrospect, I probably should have spoken up when I knew it was two weeks because I work with kids, high school kids, all the time, in all the school districts.
So we can, we will put that on the agenda for September because it might be that we have to bring school a week later instead, so there's only a week gap, or we might have to change the date and move it.
Or a different venue.
And find a new venue, and that will be for the purview of the committee.
Yeah. I mean, no offense, you know, I, to the playhouse, you know, the music circus, it's good and stuff, but it's not like, wow, you know, I just don't think it's irreplaceable.
It's free though.
What?
It's free.
Yeah, I realize that. But other schools have other, don't have music circus, and they graduate and they put up a tent or do something. And, you know, I think when it comes to safety and our responsibility to have over 100 kids, you know, be responsible for them when they're really not in school every day for those two weeks. It gives me nightmares at night.
No, we appreciate that. And the thing that really concerning us that we're talking about, 10, 11% of the class being impacted.
Right.
For the share.
Oh, yeah, for alone students.
Jeanette had a quick response.
Well, I've also had some feedback about the music circus, which I would like to discuss with you offline. It's not a negative, it's a positive. I think that they would like us to be having our graduation earlier, and I think that they're disappointed. They're kind of getting a bad rap from people for changing it. So I would appreciate.
May I ask?
An opportunity to speak with the chairman.
Okay. And may I ask, you've been getting information that the music circus came and approached us and asked us to be pushed back two weeks, so they've come to you and asked you to be earlier?
No, they didn't come to me. I'm hearing mixed stories in the community.
Okay.
So I want the opportunity to discuss it with Mr. O'Beane.
Okay. Mary?
Just a question. Ron, so the date at which you would be able to make a decision or a change would be June 12th, 10th?
The 10th.
The 10th.
Right now, the lacrosse semifinals, the state for Harvard semifinals, June 10th and Tuesday.
Okay.
Doesn't mean things can't change, you know, with weather and everything else, but usually when they book a facility like Harvard, they don't really move that around too much. So that was the last email I received from the directors. They're planning for the next one.
So that's the Tuesday?
Tuesday.
So that's actually a good amount of time.
Just a little bit.
We can get the jumbo, actually, you would get the jumbotron. You would need to put it in a lot of places around town.
Yeah, I have a captive audience the evening of the 12th to make sure the families.
Class night.
Yeah, class night.
Have it with a flyer.
Oh, we would put a blackboard connected, a message out immediately.
Grab, grab, speed, you're coming to power.
Make that.
And maybe every day in class, you could just tell, remind everyone, but now.
Right. But you know what the other thing is? Because it's also arts weekend, we really think it, you know, we have to do diligence about notifying folks because that changes their scheduling. You know, they know that we need the parking lot in the afternoon, and of course, people might creep in the morning thinking, oh, we can use it in the morning and just get out. So this would really be preparation to make sure everybody understands we need that lot, make sure we have it available.
I would recommend that we start this communication process as early as tomorrow.
I plan to.
Great. And send an email to people, letting them know that it's an either, be very clear that it may not happen, and that you will let them know on the 10th what the time will be.
Will it be on the 10th? Or could it be on the 11th?
It could be tomorrow.
It could be tomorrow.
Fair enough.
We have, we have three games that we have to win, so.
We'll keep them posted.
Well, you might want to get tomorrow evening's game.
Yes.
And send something out on Friday if you need to.
I mean, in the future too, I think it's wise to look at changing it. I can give you some potential dates that very little is scheduled. If we just move two days earlier to this Thursday, there would be, there's no games going on anywhere in the state on that day.
But do we know that for next year?
I, I can get a good feel from.
That's, that's the dicey part.
Well, knowing the tournament director.
The state tournaments.
I can get a better feel from them, or after they go through this first cycle, what would you change about it? You know, would you want to keep the same type of dates? You know, if the state finals are Saturday, very few directors would want to play Thursday because it's so close. So this is things to think about with you.
Is lacrosse the only sport that added?
No. In fact, if, you know, if Emma Davis was a senior, she's playing in her third now, state semifinals, and that will never change. It'll always be that Saturday. So next year, as a senior, she could be the first four-time state champion in history of school and have to make a decision whether she would go to graduation or that on a same day. So there's some, there's some considerations to consider, you know, moving forward with that date.
Just an idea, does it, does it make sense to be definitive now or tomorrow after the game or something as opposed to leaving it hanging? Would there be any disadvantage to just definitively saying that we're going to move it to 10:00? Mr. Claude?
We certainly talked to Mr. Longo, I would think, but I would have to turn to Mrs. Conley too and ask her where she is heading up to graduation, not to put you on the spot.
No, 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 it's fine. I'm happy to be on the spot. I think that even though sometimes a decision is better than being in flux, I think so many families have done so much careful planning and have company coming in the morning. Party started three or four or five, that if we could keep things intact for them or provide as little, I think it would also be a little bit, yeah, it could be a little bit disappointing or kind of a sorry reminder if we shouldn't make it that far. That when folks get up that morning, not only do they move graduation, I have to get up early and get there, and then wait around for my party. So I hope that doesn't seem frivolous to, but I really would like to yield to the family planning that I'm sure didn't start yesterday.
No. There are lots of people that have brunches in the morning prior to graduation too, so you have that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, they're like, they have family coming from out of town flying in, flying in.
Right.
Like getting in at nine o'clock.
Might be a problem.
You might miss the whole event.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, it may not be that many flying in, but those who are flying in will miss it.
Right.
Ellen Mars, 63 Old Castle Road. I was just going to say what Dr. Schuber just said, there are people, you know, whether they're flying in or even driving in, you have 90 other students.
Exactly.
That are being impacted. I, you know, I don't have a lacrosse player, so I'm not in the predicament, but you have , you know, 90 that are being.
Versus 11.
Versus 11. So just, you know, keep that in perspective, please.
Makes sense. Okay. So for now, we're just going to wait and see, but start communications to let people know there's a chance.
We can, but I think you might need, as you took a vote to change the graduation to a different day altogether, you might need to take a vote giving us permission if we need to move it versus us just moving it.
Okay. So do we have a motion to have a contingency plan for moving the graduation from the originally scheduled time to 10:00 a.m.?
Was it, excuse me, Mrs. Charlie, was it 10:00 or 10:30 you were thinking of?
We had discussed both.
Okay. Maybe the liberty of moving it earlier.
To 10:00 or 10:30 or at the discretion.
I think it was depending on what game we drew in the afternoon and what was the reasonable. We'd like to keep it as close to the planned start time as possible, but it would really depend on the transportation, we don't need. So I wouldn't say 10:00 or 11:00.
We'll say another time on the same date.
Adjust.
It's not how time that day goes for the music circus, there'll be kids.
For now. Okay. So we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Some more to wait. I'll make the motion to give flexibility to the administration of time for graduation in Cohasset High School.
I'll second.
On June, is it June 14?
Yes.
Yeah, June 14. I should know, I'm going to be in Worcester trying to figure out who's going to be on our ballot for governor.
Yes. And actually, I've heard from everybody, Mrs. Estino, I haven't heard from you yet whether you're able to come with us on the 14th.
I'm not certain. Now with the possible time change, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
So we need to vote.
We need to vote.
We have a motion hanging.
We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I, I'm not comfortable with this, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I'm going to have to vote no only from the point of view, I just worry that the night you have the kids.
I mean, that's why, that's why I'm not voting. I, I realize that it's a big, we've had this conversation in the past, and there are 90 other students in the class.
So we have three in favor, one against, and one abstentions. So it passes.
Right.
Okay. And I would just ask that if we could stay in very close communication, what are the dates of the three hurdle games other than tomorrow?
Tomorrow, there'll be sometime over the weekend, I'm assuming is Saturday, Sunday, and then Tuesday.
Okay. So we're talking about Thursday, Saturday, and Tuesday. So it's, any one of those losses could take us out?
Yeah, there's still three.
And we're weather dependent too, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, so there's, there's a possibility if weather backs up one of these, which right now it doesn't go by just going to take everything to go off. We play tomorrow.
Okay. Now, in no way are we rooting against our team either. So let's make clear about that. We want them to go all the way. And perhaps call them into the arena for a good reason. So, okay. So that's the graduation start time. Middle high school improvement plan is up.
Yes. And that is why you have Mrs. Conley here. Maybe you want to pop.
Yeah, sure thing. I believe you all had a copy of it in your packet. This will come from next year. And you will notice that on advice of the school council, of which Dr. Leeve is our liaison member, we really try to focus in on being true to goals as we had done this past year that were both attainable, achievable, and realistic, and directly related to instructional practice. And so some of our goals are continuation of this year, and some are kind of a more finely tuned version of goals from this year. So our first goal is to continue the school-wide development and revision of written curriculum for all subjects 6 through 12 under the direction of our curriculum director, Luis DeMoss. We have engaged in a tremendous amount of professional work this year in mapping our curriculum across all of the disciplines, a job that we know will continue on for a couple more years, but certainly next year it needs to stay at the forefront of the professional work that we do as educators. And so that will remain as the first goal. Particularly to the action steps that makes a difference from last year is to, hopefully the ultimate goal will be to be able to access all of the written curricula in a common, on a common drive, a common access point, a sky drive across the district. It would be lovely for families moving to the district for me to be able to say, please by all means, go and start browsing through our curriculum offerings so that parents could really get a sense of the richness of content and work that is done in the classrooms, but also to make sure that we're providing opportunity to train new teachers on curriculum mapping analysis. And I know we have a lot of in-house folk now who can use a train-to-trainer model. We have a lot of teachers who have proven very adept at getting to know the software well, but I just put it in there as an action step because I think it's a critical piece to welcome new folks aboard and make sure that they're confidently a part of the process.
The only thing I want to add about that, I was already to talk to Mrs. DeMoss about it, there's a little bump in the problem between fifth and sixth in getting students up with their writing skills, but Mrs. DeMoss is aware of that. Right? I mean, we're. That's already addressed, and we have a focus group already started with Mrs. Conley with all of the ELA teachers, grades six, seven, and eight, and a conversation with Dearhill as well. So it's, it's being addressed. Right. Because it came to my attention from the community that that was a problem, it was a problem. It is being addressed. Right.
Mrs. DeMoss, would you care to add anything to?
No. I think that there's a great deal of Atlas curriculum going on, and as I explained to the committee earlier, there's a great deal that can be done diagnostically through the software, so we're in great shape right now. Other questions I can address regarding the first goal? I just have a silly question. It doesn't mean anything. In the past, the members of the committee have signed off on this, and there are no signatures here.
Hmm. I can certainly, they were an integral part, I assure you.
Absolutely.
Certainly provide you a signature page.
That would be great. I mean, it's great that you included their names at the beginning, but it's kind of.
You are correct.
It gets a little bonding on your part.
I will make, I will make sure that we do that.
What the content is?
Before we post it, I'll make sure that that exists.
Great.
Thank you. The second goal is to continue to improve our delivery of our guidance curriculum and the social-emotional programming for all students under the superintendent's leadership. The district is certainly exploring social-emotional programs that would be appropriate, K through 12, and so obviously a very interested party to that work. But at the school, the building level, we're continuing to work on delivering, delivery of guidance services, both in terms of transition, which is listed, pulled out as a separate goal, in terms of college planning, really creating an opportunity in ensuring that our students have a personal relationship with guidance counselors, and that we've done a lot of work in the college planning and pushing a lot of it back much farther than it used to be, but the challenge to guidance counselors at the high school in particular this year was by the end of the ninth grade, you will have met in small groups or individually with every student at least four times because it can't start junior year, it can't start at the end of sophomore year. And they've been really terrific about doing small groups during the utility block and not having to pull kids out of classes necessarily to meet and talk about subjects specific to ninth graders. All of our ninth graders already have an Aviance account, which students used to not get for another year and a half. And so this summer, maybe some will be more enterprising than others, it's starting to poke around and explore possible college opportunities. And so we're really dedicated to making sure that there is a hearty guidance curriculum that exists that's programmatic, but also fosters relationships that aren't cursory in nature, and that don't just become stronger as students go into the process, junior year, and feel like that's the point they need to get to know the guidance counselor because this person will be writing me a letter. And so I, please.
Just a question, and it may be off topic. Is there flexibility within the guidance department if sometimes students, for whatever reason, don't hit it off with one guidance counselor or another? Can they cross, I know they're divided by alphabet.
Yep. They're divided alphabetically. I've never had the request.
Okay.
It's certainly something that if we had a reason that we felt a student would identify better, could make a closer relationship, it's certainly something that you can.
Yep.
I'm concerned, of course, with the academic guidance counseling part, but I guess I'm even more concerned with the survival of the student population. And I'm concerned, you know, the social service league wants to do something in the school for opiate addiction and things like that, and they're offering programming, and that hasn't happened. You know, they were trying to get us to, you know, commit to some sort of programs. We really need to communicate with them about that.
I've not been in touch with anybody directly?
Yes, yeah.
I've not heard from anybody?
Yes, yeah, uh, they, yeah, they, um, I believe it was Christine Murphy who, uh, talked to you, or a superintendent?
No, didn't speak with me, but I did want to update you because I know you'd asked, and I've been speaking with Alice and Sylvia back, well, texted.
Yes, now it's Alice.
And, uh, we are going, we're trying to find a date. We're now into July, but we will be meeting in July.
To do something in the fall.
Is what the predicted time, it was the last predicted email that we had, just, I think, a day ago.
Right, because, you know, we have an issue, and we're trying to do something throughout the whole Cohasset community social service league, uh, under my direction, uh, dealing with the opiate thing.
Right, so I didn't want you to think...
Across the state. And then the other thing is, um, I'd like to see, you know, in the guidance, some, a program, like a tell-some-one program, because, you know, um, I know, like, any other...
We have the How Not to Keep a Secret Program?
Yeah, I know.
Which is, which Kevin Magowan owns.
Yeah, and I think it's good that, uh, the school board here knows more about those type of programs. So we know, uh, because there's too many emergencies going on in high schools throughout the country, and we need to make sure that we are communicating between the students, to the guidance, the faculty, if they notice things in the essays that they write, those type of things, everybody who's on the front lines. And then there has to be some sort of procedure, you know, for people who they think are at high risk for being in trouble in terms of mental health issues. So I, I think it's really important we have something going on. Not just in the high school, but high school is usually more the place where it's going to be an issue. So, that's it.
Um, just thinking outside the box here, the advisory program at the middle school would probably be a great place to start the social service component, um, because there are all kinds of exercises done in that timeframe where they do team building and, you know, different kinds of, uh... They employ different types of skills for the kids to try to adopt. So I don't know how you would integrate it at the high school because I, I'm not aware of advisory at the high school. Because advisory students are from the high school.
The peer leaders, right.
Participate in the peer leaders in the middle school. So that seems to be a natural progression for something like that. I mean, that they could maybe do something and integrate it in the middle school. And obviously, the earlier you educate students on these issues and, you know, problems, the better. So maybe you could kind of watch and follow it through in high school. But I also want to tell you that I know one particular ninth grader who has used Naviance already.
Fantastic. So that is an interesting point of, of the way in which they overlap, uh, goals two and four, um, in terms of the advisory program and best uses of it to make those kinds of connections. The high school peer leaders certainly are a great resource for the middle school students. They, they do a nice job of connecting with them. The middle school advisory piece has some, uh, much more concrete lessons that are, um, more easily bought into by the particular age group. And one of the discoveries that came out of the accreditation information and survey and self-study was that, was that survey that we've referred to a couple of times, where most of the students in the high school, over ninety-five percent, report that they have an adult in the building, at least one, uh, with whom they would, uh, talk comfortably about any issue that presented a, a problem for them. And so a lot of the feeling is that because we're such a small school in general, that there is a sense of community, and so to artificially create an advisor when in fact kids really do have people. Um, so that's been an ongoing conversation. We've made a point in the last two years to make sure that the freshman class does at least one big team-building thing in September. The coach sweep is what they've done the past two years, where the entire class goes out with their, um, their advisory teacher was basically kind of a homeroom teacher. But that's how they make those relationships. And those advisors are, um, privy to, that's where we distribute progress reports and report cards, so that, the idea being, of course, they're keeping tabs and having conversations with kids about ways, ways to best use the utility time.
And next year, you have a particular hole in the situation at the middle school because Mrs. Duffy is leaving, and she has been the heartbeat of emotional stuff going on in that middle school. If there's ever a problem, Miss Duffy knows about it. And she's able to bring peers together to help other peers when it came to bullying, when it came to all kinds of things. So her leaving, i- it's just one of those things. Mrs. Duffy's been the fabric, I mean, just like it's woven into the whole middle school. Then if you needed somebody to talk to, you'd go to Mrs. Duffy. So I'm concerned if, um, that we make sure that, that we know that that piece is going to be missing, especially for people who are in seventh and eighth who started talking to her in sixth. So there needs to be something to replace that. And that's going to be a challenge. Because sometimes one individual i- is just irreplaceable.
She with all of her verve is probably irreplaceable, but I'm hoping that younger teachers who've watched her ability to connect with kids will, will step in to fill the void, and maybe not just one person, but a whole collection of folk can say, we want to make sure the kids always feel as comfortable as they, I mean, there's probably very few people in the building who haven't gone to Marianne Duffy for at least a week.
Correct, so you may just need to have more structured programs to get them in because they just came in on their own because of that.
Yes.
That's just a heads up.
Um, the, the goal listed as number three is to continue to improve transition for students and families eventually, sixth and ninth graders. I referenced, um, here in our two inaugural kind of orientation programs last year that were very successful. The sixth grade was a several-hour-long thing led by sixth-grade teachers and, and eighth and ninth graders. Uh, did a lot of activities. Students really got comfortable in the building, but also did a lot of bonding in a way that, um, was acknowledging of the fact that they're now middle schoolers, and they'd be moving around a lot about the building and involved scavenger hunting activities outside. Catherine Dunphy is a sixth and seventh-grade English teacher who happens to work with Jim Willis at Camp Wing in the summer. So she has that kind of camp counselor attitude, which is wonderful in harnessing the energy of the sixth graders. So the teachers really did a wonderful job working with Mrs. Sandler and I last year to make that, uh, make the, um, the sixth-grade transition much, much more than just the move-up day, which is coming on Friday. And so we'd like to continue to strengthen that program to the point where we know what it looks like, we know what parts of it work, and of course, you tweak it every year to make sure that it's fresh, but at the same time, it feels like a tradition in the community. And the same with the ninth-grade program. We found last year that working, once the sports schedule started for high school students, to have the, the ninth graders in who, I think they're kind of supposed to know the building, but don't really, um, come in for a couple of hours and be able to talk to other student leaders. And we just kind of, for the most part, last year, left it in the hands of kids with the adults on the side, with a lot of upperclassmen just talking about, um, transitioning to the high school opportunities available. And last year, you know, we were able to publish that, you know, the co-curricular handbook, which was available to all freshmen coming through, so they, they didn't have to worry about who they knew or who had an older sibling, how do I get connected? The information was all there. So we just want to make sure that those programs really become a fabric, a part of the fabric of the middle high school, and that people don't wonder if they'll exist everywhere, they just are. Anyone have any questions about that? And then, um, number five is really closely linked to number one over time in terms of conversation about instructional practices.
Mrs. Conley, can I just interrupt one second?
Please.
That I want to kind of tap to the board that they might not be aware of too in that whole transition to ninth grade, that Mrs. Conley's really made a huge effort this year when speaking with families, uh, who are considering leaving the public schools and moving on to private schools, and a group of them, and she probably went to more detail, but a group of them are sitting, different ones are sitting with the families and talking to them and asking them their reasons, really digging deep as to why families are leaving. And I think this year, we have five families that chose not to leave, even though the opportunity existed. So I think that's a real compliment, that the number of folks that have decided not to leave has, has diminished. And I did want to add that, because that's part of the transition.
And folks really appreciated the opportunity, those families really appreciated the opportunity for their students to shadow a freshman for the day, and to see, to find a like-minded freshman, similar interests, so they could see what the, what the actual school day felt like. So that seems to have, that seems to have borne fruit in some cases.
Right, which I consider to be really a part of the transition that isn't really highlighted here, but should be, because I know that's always been a discussion point among the community.
Just a quick question. Um, I know that Mr. Scott met with all of the eighth graders. Is that right? And what, what point is that done during the year?
The scheduling process?
Yeah, right.
Yep, um, he did, he started that at the end of February, I believe.
And that, that's something that will continue?
Yes.
That's what, because that was terrific.
When we arrived on scene and discovered, um, the timeline of scheduling that didn't make us particularly comfortable, but also the, the potential, without disparagement to anybody, um, the lack of depth of conversation as to how kids were making these decisions. You know, fourteen and fifteen-year-olds deciding what the courses and the levels, and, and seeming to do it, um, somewhat arbitrarily based on what their friends were doing. We realized there was a need for them to have individual conversations. So the soph, the current freshman sophomores and juniors all met individually with their counselors. So they also, they might have done the initial scheduling process but in computers and small groups, but before anybody agreed to a schedule for next year, they met individually with the counselor to talk about, what is your rationale for thinking you want to take two art, two or three art courses senior year? Oh, you want to go to art school? Perfect, let's talk about that. To make sure that folks were on the right trajectory from freshman year to achieve the goals that they want to achieve in terms, uh, by the time they're applying to schools or planning a year of law or whatever it is that they want to do for their personal success. So, thanks, Mrs. Conley. Um, so our, our fifth goal is to, to examine and improve assessment practices for equity, equity and accountability. This is certainly in response to the accreditation report, um, however, whatever parts of that we vehemently disagree with, and whatever parts of it we recognize as being true about ourselves. It's a conversation that's already begun in terms of, um, the growth of the school. I think for a long time, I don't think I know just from talking to teachers, that the idea of, of teacher autonomy at Cohasset Middle High School wasn't based on a teacher's particular, uh, ego or selfishness. It just was because the school was so small, up until two years ago. And I know that, that there was a time way before I existed that there had been split teams and whatnot. But up until two years ago, the sixth-grade social studies teacher was the sixth-grade social studies teacher. It, it isn't like in larger towns where letters arrive in the mail and people are comparing schedules. You knew who you were getting. And in some ways, that's a, that's a safety net for, for kids. In some cases, it might cause, you know, tremendous peril, I don't know. But, um, as the, as the grades get larger and more people become responsible for more courses, I mean, for the same course, the conversation has to exist, not just about curriculum and how we are teaching it, but how we're assessing students, and in what ways is that best, and, and what practices do we need to adopt and adhere to. But of course, you know, Mrs. Demus will be instrumental in helping us to arrive at those decisions. But for me, it's, it comes down to a very simple, um, idea of students having equal access to success. And so as a student or a parent, or as the principal, there shouldn't be any way that I can think of quote-unquote "playing the system." And I think we have tremendously gifted educators at the middle high school, and I'm sure across the district. But the reality is people fall into habits of mind and practice that maybe aren't examined as often as they ought to be. And you could very easily have two or three teachers of the same subject and level who count writing or homework at, as a different percentage of the grade, who have a different makeup policy. Um, all of those kinds of things that if you, if you really stop, take the time to examine it, they're not fair. So I shouldn't know as a kid that if I down the hall, I can get an A. If I do every homework and everything's on time, I can always rewrite it, I can always get the A or the B, whereas the fellow down the other end of the hall, it, I, I will work like a dog and I'll be lucky to make a B minus. So we've started the conversation at some faculty meetings and with the department chairs at our school-based leadership team about, um, first examining what we believe to be quality assessments, having all of the teachers share with us what they believe to be some of their best practice and their best work, and, uh, things that give them a true picture of student learning. And then now have the conversation, provide a rationale. And then we're hoping, eventually, that needs to lead to, uh, at the very least, uh, policies that are by department in, or potentially by, by grade level at the middle school. But the larger we get, I mean, it's really a conversation I wanted to put in writing so that folks didn't doubt that we were going to be having the conversation, and that can make some change, a cultural shift that needs to happen. We need to acknowledge our growth and embrace it. And I guess I've been quite encouraged by the folks with whom I've already had the conversation. People are intrigued and interested about it, and enthusiastic instead of, you know, there's no way, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, so I'm hoping it'll be a really positive way to continue to talk about teaching and learning at the school. Questions about that?
We have a question from Ms. Martin.
Thanks, John. I think that's, that's terrific. The other thing that you could add to it would be timing. As we know, some teachers grade and work is done and collected and, and is redistributed back to the children, so they have an idea of, you know, how they're doing. And midterm is not a surprise. Some don't grade until midterm reports come home, and some don't grade until the very end. And it's very challenging to figure out where you're, where you're, you're going and what you're doing as a student if you don't get your papers back, but your mom gets a progress report online. And there's a big what the heck's going on, you know? So, um, or, good job, honey. It can go either way, but I'm just saying, it's, it's very, every teacher is different, and it's very frustrating as a parent.
I hear exactly what you're saying, I agree. And at the risk of speaking out of turn, I would suggest that at some point in the future, there will be a conversation with the teachers' association that will likely have to do with online grading practices. And generally speaking, when districts adopt those things, there is a generally expected turnaround time of grades being updated at least every two weeks. And most of the districts that have gone that route, that's generally what folks start with, and therefore, everyone is held to the standard of, there is now on paper, as part of our contractual agreement, I'm expected to report back to students their progress at a, by a specific time. And that also helps to keep everyone informed of stu, I, yes, how can you possibly do better if you don't know how you're doing?
How you're doing.
Does something like that have to wait to be negotiated in a contract? Or can that just be kind of a policy that's set forward by the principal, whoever?
We can propose it being done, and part of it has already been proposed, but we also know we're going to have to bargain for it. It'll stop going to negotiations.
To make it binding, but in the meantime, you can at least have a recommendation? No? Not at all, okay, great.
My, by, my informal but strenuous recommendation to teachers has been, um, I will be most displeased if parents are surprised because as a parent and as an educator, why should anything ever be a surprise to folks? Especially if the grade is not what we think it ought to be. Now, does that mean that across the park that that happens all the time? No.
No, why is that a bargaining thing?
I'm amazed.
I urge you to really look at this contract strenuously, and this is the way it is. And if people here are not satisfied with the eighteen hours, I know Ronnie worked a thousand hours, but if some of the teachers in the high school are unhappy with their eighteen hours, I'm sure Brockton is hiring.
Well, I appreciate the, the notion that we should explore, is there an alternative to getting something established without contract negotiations? So it seems like you're pretty certain of it, but...
It's the online piece that needs to be, it's a change of work conditions.
Okay, well, that's two different things.
It's a change of work conditions.
Okay, but I think we can still find a middle ground, perhaps without online grading, uh, and still have a policy that's established for turnaround time for completing even handwritten grading, sure. Right?
We can certainly discuss that.
Does anyone, discuss that here?
We'd move that to the fall.
Okay. So why don't we just take that as a item we'll add to the agenda for, maybe not the fall, but maybe just, because you want to implement it by the fall, right?
Well, you don't, you only have one more meeting before we close out the year.
Okay, okay.
Last year, I was getting phone calls from parents saying that a particular teacher had given tests and didn't turn around the test in a timely fashion. So the next test contained information that had been covered in the first test. The students got wrong. They didn't know what they didn't know. So then they had two bad test grades, and it actually, it happened a third time. These parents were very dis, very angry, disgruntled. So they did take, I suggested that they take it up with the teacher, and I believe they did, because I never heard another thing. But I said, you have to go up the chain of command. I always tell them, speak to the teacher first. If you don't get anywhere with that, then you go to the principal. You know, and as I said, I never heard another word, so I'm guessing that it was remedied. But to the point that we were just speaking, that's, that should never happen.
No, and in, and in terms of acknowledging as part of that goal of the fairness of, of assessment practices, that is part of the conversation because, um, again, uh, the, a conversation I've had with the faculty at large, but certainly with department heads too, is that, I believe the gauntlet I threw down, two, two meetings ago was, if anybody in the room has an assessment that is so high stakes, a student cannot possibly pass your course without passing the assessment, I would very much like to have a private conversation with you. I haven't really heard from anybody. So, I mean, I think the message is, high-stakes testing is not what we're about. We're about mastery of standards, and we're about allowing every student to achieve success in a way that it works best for that student, but you have to report back the information. And so I don't say that to sound as though the faculty meeting was a bully pulpit. It was just kind of a factual observation of, this is what you need to be thinking about when you're thinking about how much you wait potentially a final exam at the high school level, especially. That is, you know, it, just give me a good rationale, and it could be a very interesting conversation. I'd love to hear the rationale. Um, so people, so people know that it's something that we want to examine closely, and that, you know, folks do need to handle accountable. Because we, we, we say all the time, we want to hold the kids accountable.
But how, how do you reconcile that? How do you explain to teachers, okay, this is what teacher X is doing. Your teacher Y, you cannot expect, one, you can't expect kids not to talk in school when they know that this teacher expects you to do a project and you get three weeks to do it. This teacher expects you to do almost the exact same project, maybe at a little bit higher level, and you've got one week to do it.
And that's, yeah.
And that happened again last year. I was getting phone calls. Why is this? Again, speak to the administration, speak to the teacher first and then the administration. So.
I may be able to also respond. I think the curriculum mapping also will help kind of set the pace for everybody. We know that every kid, child or student moves at a different pace. Some will move more quickly than others. Some need more stimulation than others. But overall, I think if everybody has that curriculum plan or curriculum map in front of them, I think it will also help them with their pacing so that there's more regularity among everybody.
I hope so. The worth, the worthiness of common assessments is something that, you know, teachers believe in or understand. I think we just need to, to work with them to show how you arrive at that point. Because the idea that you're going to give, have to give up something really doesn't usually bear out to be the case. And I think that a lot of our teachers and a lot of the Atlas work this year by collaborating on just those course units that Mrs. Cattaldo referenced, has shown them that there is much to be gained from that kind of collaboration rather than just having to own something independently. So I think that we are absolutely on the right track. But I wanted to make it a specific thing because that's what we're going to have to hold me accountable.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
My great pleasure.
That's great. And why don't we just make sure that, I guess, the meeting after next, that we add to the agenda some more discussion. It'll be August. Some discussion about policies that we can integrate outside of the bargaining agreement to help expedite turnaround time. All right. So we're on to the superintendent evaluation.
May I ask the committee, because I, we have to cover the park tonight. And I know that's also a lengthy conversation. But it also involves Mrs. Demas who has a forty-five minute drive. And I'm wondering if the committee would be willing to vote to make a turn, a switch between the evaluation and the park, move the park up so that she can get on the road and get home in a good hour.
Could I make another recommendation too, that we accept the grants of the CEF?
Yes, yes.
And so maybe we move a few things up.
Absolutely. I agree.
Mrs. Thomas, you're not sitting there until ten. Because you're giving us money.
We'll have to vote first, okay. So if you can vote, if you can make a motion to vote first do CEF and then do park.
I make a motion to do CEF and park discussion, move them up ahead of the other agenda items.
I'll second.
Thank you. This will help everybody.
All in favor? Mrs. Thomas.
Mrs. Thomas.
I guess we just have to ask you to say your full, you know, your name and address.
Okay. Deb Thomas, fifteen Rustic Drive, Hudson, Mass.
Thank you.
I am the head of the grants committee for the CEF. And I'm just here to present a check for fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars to the school committee for nine grants that we got this grant, this time around. There are, let's see, there are three for the Osgood. One is a rock climbing wall for the, for Mr. Dykis, that Mr. Dykis had put in. There is another grant for something called the Brayden Pop Junior, which is an online program. And then there is another one for digital literacy, digital literacy writing program at the Osgood School for seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And then for Deer Hill, we have two. We have one for one thousand, fifty-eight dollars for something called the Immigrant Experience, which is a, two assemblies with a musical trio called the Promised Land, which teaches students, uses music and song and stuff to teach students about the history of immigration. And then will also be linked to classroom activities at the Deer Hill. And then, and the other one for Deer Hill is a digital lobby sign for nineteen hundred. They're gonna purchase and install a digital sign for the entranceway at Deer Hill in the front lobby to convey information, showcase children's work and programs through pictures and video at Deer Hill School. And then at the middle high school level, fifteen thousand dollars for the middle high school auditorium, sound and lighting equipment and rewiring. And this one, we're doing co-funding with the PSO. They're also putting in fifteen thousand dollars to just update everything and get everything working properly there.
They're digitizing it to be exact. They're going to put in a whole digital system so that Mrs. Moriarty doesn't have to run from the soundboard through all the people, turning Mr. Skipper into the backstage and then run back again.
Exactly. And all the lighting will be, so you don't have to turn on all the lights all at one time. And everything will be redone, basically. And then twelve thousand dollars to do phase one of the library, turning the library over to more of a learning commons area. Provide areas for the students and faculty to work collaboratively and make it sort of, right now it's not being used to its best potential. Everybody sort of came to that conclusion. Have an inviting space where people can go and work on projects and do different things instead of just a whole bunch of stacks of books. And then two more things at the middle high school. One is the continuation of the middle high school Lego and robotics club, which Laura Humphrey does for six thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for this year. And then hopefully that will be taken into, eventually will be part of.
Operation.
Operation, yeah, yeah. Operating budget. And then also the Model UN club at the middle high school for two thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars for the Model UN's public speaking and global issues simulation. So that and here is.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The CEF, of course, is always an invaluable addition to our community. And it's incredible that you guys do so much hard work to help us out. And these are really terrific gifts and a huge sum of money. So thank you for all of your efforts. Really appreciate it.
Again, I want to thank the CEF and the PSO for all the time and effort and money that's been done. These are some terrific grants. They've been around for a while, kind of bubbling around. Finally come up to the surface with a Model UN, with an auditorium as a combined grant. The model, the, oh, it's the robotics, which has been a terrific program. I've seen kids go through there and have a tremendous experience of that. The library, to expand it, is going to be a terrific source for information or collaboration, both of the teachers and the students. I really want to think this is a really huge addition to these group of grants. It's not just one, it's a, it's a spattering and it's a wonderful group of grants.
It was a good, they were really happy with the grants that came in this year, the year this spring. There was a great lot of thought put into it.
That's terrific. Do you have a comment for the audience?
I have.
Can you just, for the record?
It's Patty Gillis, Jones and Row.
Your full address for the record.
I'm sorry.
Can you tell your address?
One R D two.
Sorry, it's a standard.
I wish, do teachers apply to you? Can they apply, do they apply to the CEF?
Yes, so, yes, and I have who, you know, you can see this who apply. They go, they do a pre-application and give it to the principal of their school. And they go, kind of go over it. And then they go back and do the full application, yes.
I know some of the teachers at the Deer Hill are upset because they, they went to, you know, they went out, it just went straight to CEF. They had to go through Dr. DiChiara and then she kind of decided what was important and what wasn't. And.
That, that has been.
And it's, and a lot of these were really upset at the, at the Deer Hill.
Okay, we didn't, you know, we don't know, we don't know what doesn't come to us.
No, I mean, I think they felt that they had, they had things that were really, really important and Dr. DiChiara had other ideas.
Okay, because usually, usually the thing, they do go through the principal first. There's like a pre-application that they do and it goes to the principal, they discuss it. And sometimes they get stopped there because they think it could go into the regular budget or be taken care of elsewhere. But usually, you know, so I don't know, I don't know.
I can speak to that a little bit.
Okay.
I know that at least one teacher at Deer Hill voiced to me that there was a grant possibility. And I stopped her right there and said, we can take care of that.
Right, and that does happen.
So sometimes, sometimes that happens. They're unaware that it falls into professional development or it falls into new instruction. The other thing that happens with principals is sometimes it is against the curricular alignment or what we've already initiated. So some of those decisions, although they make some individuals unhappy, are just not aligning with where we're going or our mission. So sometimes those decisions are not quite clear. And sometimes when we discuss as a leadership, something that we want to align from pre-K to twelve, that interrupts that decision. So it probably would be best if that, that person had a discussion with Dr. DiChiara or whoever the principal is, because I'm sure there's an other side.
Yeah, and sometimes things, but they, they get to us and then we go back, we meet with Barbara. And Barbara says, oh, that's something we can do here, or that's something, or we size better than the PSO. We'll maybe take it or something like that. So, you know.
That wasn't the case.
No.
It's okay, it's all right.
Some of these are in the bylaws of various 503C corporations such as the CMS. So some of the bylaws may restrict where the monies will be dictated to be sent by the proper process is how it's done. So they may have been upset, but there, there are regulations and guidelines that need to be followed as well.
Do you have to say it twice? Probably not, right? Just one, oh, you have to do it every time, sorry.
I'll just introduce myself at the beginning of every meeting. I just, I have a question for the committee regarding the Lego and robotics and the Model UN. Do I understand that the CEF has been funding them as an outside source and they're not part of the operational budget?
This is the first time for the Model UN. Until now, the Model UN was a volunteer.
Okay.
Situation where the individual who was doing it was volunteering of their time.
Because it's been around for a while.
Right, but it was a volunteer situation. And then it was not part of our operational budget. And the CEF has elected to fund it for next year.
Okay.
Robotics, they have been funded, yes.
They have been funded, okay. Will they become part of the budget?
That's what we're always looking to, yeah.
Okay, now, are the, are the participants charged a user fee?
I'm not sure what.
Lego, yes.
Yes.
In Lego robotics, yes. In Model UN, yes.
I don't know about.
I don't know about.
I know if they pay, when, the Model UN, when they travel, they have to pay their travel fees. That's not a user fee. They elect to go to New York, they would have to pay those fees to go.
Okay.
But they don't pay upfront user fee.
But in terms of a standard user fee, like we have at the school, there aren't any.
There is one for robotics.
There is one for robotics.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, again, thanks so much, Deb, and for all the hard work. So we really appreciate it. And I guess we'll have a formal vote. Do you have a?
Yeah, we need to accept it.
Yeah, we have to say our.
We have to have a formal vote to accept the, the very generous gift from the CEF, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the CEF. It's, what is it?
Fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven.
Yep. And it's good to meet you because your sister moved into Orange Road Street in Deepwater. Ron, and his family.
We have a second from Merrick, so all in favor? Name vote.
I'm Mary McGoldrick.
I'm Paul Scherer.
I'm Gina Steen.
I'm Holly Newt.
I'm Paul and you're Jamie. Thanks again, thank you.
Thank you.
Very grateful.
Is it possible to get a full listing of the, all the nine gifts? Okay, great.
I have it and Barbara has it too. Yeah. I'll send one to you.
Thank you very much.
Now you can stay if you want. I can give you this copy too. It's not signed or anything. And the copy in that envelope, but it's the signed one.
It's in there too.
That would actually be nice if that went into.
The record, the minutes?
Yeah. I think so.
Can we add that to the minutes?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're going to park.
Yes, so now we'll go to park.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
Do we just have that to the minutes?
Yeah, I have it.
As exhibit, okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This was helpful reading this.
This was very informative.
Yeah.
Oh, everything we gave you?
Yeah.
Okay. And I have more tonight to share.
Oh, good. You gave us that from the lawyer.
Oh, this here?
No.
Oh, which piece?
About how it's these school committees' responsibility.
Oh, yes, yes. And actually, I know that Mrs. Steen shared that with you. And I had sent out an email for the, you know, we had just gotten it. You were having it downloaded in the afternoon. We had just been notified of it late that, the afternoon before and it was on the agenda. You just couldn't see it was on our agenda. Because we know that the committee has purview to vote and will have to vote as to what we do concerning the park or concerning the MCAS. We have been working as a leadership team and we do have a recommendation for the committee and we hope that you agree with what we're thinking about in terms of why we're choosing what we're choosing. One of the things I want to give to all of you is, this is the, this is a document, very cursory, but a document that just shows the reasons. The first page talks about the advantages of giving the park. And the second page, which is definitely small, it talks about the advantages of giving the MCAS. And we thought, Mrs. Demas and I were sitting, we thought that that would be a helpful document for you. I also want to share with the committee that today, Mrs. Demas and I were attending the lighthouse, superintendent's lighthouse group where we all had a chance to talk about park MCAS, park MCAS. And so I wanted to let you know that currently we have ten folks that are really hoping and planning to work on giving, administering the park assessment next spring.
You mean ten districts or ten?
Ten school districts right now. Who plan to move forward and use the park in their district.
Instead of MCAS?
Yes.
Or in addition?
Instead. We have to choose this year. It's not a, we can do both.
Do we know the districts? These are districts around here?
Yeah, there's the South Shore District. So I have Hull, Norwell, Situate, Avon, Weymouth, Plymouth, Pembroke, Rockland, West Bridgewater and Foxborough.
Hull, Hull, Norwell, Situate, Weymouth.
Avon, Plymouth, Pembroke, Rockland, West Bridgewater and Foxborough. I have six districts that are looking at giving the MCAS. However, the reason, four of those districts are giving the MCAS because they do not have enough technology to move forward to do the park. So I don't want to say that some of them are really feeling that the park might be good, but they feel without the appropriate technology, they are going to remain with the MCAS for the final year. Two of the districts have decided they want to just do the MCAS one more year and then will transition to the park. Two of our districts were undecided, completely undecided today.
What are, what are the two districts that are doing the MCAS that have nothing to do with technology?
Duxbury and Hingham, who are both fully loaded with their technology. And everybody has a different reason for wanting to choose the park or wanting to choose the MCAS. And Mrs. Demas and I were there talking today about it. And that's why we gave you what the advantages are from our viewpoint. We've attended the drive-ins that were conducted by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's, where about three hundred of us attended. We attended a superintendent's spring meeting about a week and a half ago where it was discussed. I know that you have the document that came from M A S C, which lets you know that is, you know, a policy decision for this spring. Moving forward, it won't be a policy decision because it's going to be the park and it will be the test that's given, we presume. The vote for the park won't happen until next October by the commissioner. There's still no guarantees that it will be the park. It will not be the MCAS. So if they don't do park, we don't know what they'll transition to. But they're not keeping the MCAS, at least in the form it is in.
In 2015, there will not be MCAS? Is that what, is that what you said?
Correct, yep, yep. And because we are a system, and I, because I attended the drive-in a couple of weeks ago, because we are a system with block scheduling, next year, when I spoke to Desi about it and said, well, we're a system with block scheduling, you still haven't told us what you're doing if the school has block scheduling, they have told us that they may only recommend that we do the park for grades three through eight. And because 10th grade is obligated through 2016 to do the MCAS for ELA, anyway, ELA math, they are saying that we should not begin doing park in this district until the following year, 2016. That is when they will have a test ready for block scheduling.
And it's just to clarify, the MCAS will not be here in academic year sixteen, not fifteen.
Yeah.
It will be here in fifteen.
It will be here next year. We can choose either or, but we can't do both.
But it will definitely be out of service, if you will, in academic sixteen.
On this day, that is what they're telling us.
Right, assuming it gets voted on.
Yeah, but it was confusing because.
Because there's fifteen.
Right, I asked and.
My question was.
Just, my question was, so there will be no MCAS in this district in 2015?
Right, and that's what I'm clarifying, because I think you accidentally said yes and you meant sixteen.
It's a yes or and a no. The grade ten will be made as locked in for the state as a high state test till 2018. Because they have not gone through the process of Common Core all the way through. So grade ten throughout the state, without decision of anyone else, will be taking the traditional MCAS test until 2018, until this group is out of high school. What will happen with the science is still unknown as far as physics, biology. So we don't know where they're going with that. Next year, that will be MCAS. So it's a yes and a no.
Okay, I'm still confused. So the class of 2015, 10th graders will take MCAS?
Correct, yes.
Class of 2016, 10th graders will take MCAS?
Correct.
And 2017 and 18 will still take MCAS?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
They have to kind of pass through the system.
Correct.
Once they come to the service. The other grades.
K D.
Yeah, K D rate. That's why I support the park and. So how do we prepare the 10th graders in those four graduating years if we're not giving MCAS testing to all, to all of our other students?
I don't understand your question. What do you mean?
Are you dual tracking?
The MCAS will still address the Common Core. It just will be in its very traditional form. And if we look at the MCAS, it's currently nineteen years old. So it still has reading passages that are very literal and in a very traditionally taught way of answering and responding. And there are children who have been traditionally brought through that. So the state is saying, let's not disrupt that until they're out of school. So we're just filtering them through. Grade ten is our high stakes test. So in those four years, we will have brought those children up to be ready to take the high stakes park. In the meantime, there's a shorter learning curve for these K eight. They would be ready to do that. And that's why we have the option coming in.
Right, you can't change it midway. You have to grant, basically we're grandfathering it to the others. And you do this in everything in society with testing. I mean, you just can't switch it midway.
Right.
Doctorate programs, any programs, it's very similar.
The reason why we think it's advantageous for us to make the change for grades three through eight next year is it will give us a preview of what will be forthcoming. And it will also allow us to kind of get a measure where the students are, where the strengths are, where the weaknesses are, where the gaps are for us, and what we need to do to further fortify our curriculum.
I have a question to either of you, I guess.
So, in, in reading the document that came from Mass, so next year, if we administer this test to the applicable grades in three through eight, we're held harmless?
Correct.
So, that means their results aren't, they won't penalize the school in any way?
Correct.
Going forward. But, but your perspective is it will give us an advantage the year after because they will already be familiar with the test when it will count.
And so will we.
Our hesitation initially was, we wanted to grow bar for every student, which we've been having.
Okay.
Our, our students growing. And our fear when we discussed that was, do we lose that? And we do not. We still get that bar. We still get the correlations that the MCAS sort of had its calibrated so that we can translate into the growth for students.
Okay.
But we are held harmless. In the event that we grow from, for example, one of our schools is a level two school, if park is more successful and we would move into a level one, we do.
Okay.
If we do not, and for instance, it would never happen, but our middle school, high schools faltered and we were going to a level school, we would not be. We would stay. That's where we're harmless. We don't lose, we can only gain.
From a curriculum director's point of view, I thought it was very interesting that the student comments after taking the test, they all seem to find mathematics more difficult?
Yes.
Do you think that's just by virtue of the fact that it's online and not paper and pencil? Or what was that?
No, and for the same reason that we've changed our math program?
Okay.
The math Common Core has hit like a running train.
Okay.
Our third graders are doing math that we never imagined they would do. And our middle school has changed rapidly also. This is only our second year with the new math program.
Okay.
So, I think that the younger children, when they get accustomed to that, will find that just as easy. Our middle school took a hit. They, they thought it was difficult.
Correct. And the parents aren't used to it either, believe me. So, that's part of it. So, they're not getting the support at home and, you know, it's cumulative. So, once it spreads and, and the whole community is used to the new way, it's, it's not going to be a problem. The other piece is, are we going to be, when we do the park and we're going to be signed up for, because we do algebra in seventh and eighth grade, so we're going to go with the algebra ones?
We have to make that decision. We can split it. We can ask that children who are not taking algebra class in grade eight not take the algebra.
Right.
And those who are, do. But we make that decision.
That's an important thing to know on the school board, you know, about the math. Because there's other school districts that aren't going to do the algebra versus some. We've been teaching algebra in seventh and eighth.
I'd like to preface that also with the new math program. We just ordered the new textbooks for the middle school. And the teachers are going to be working in professional development this summer and working into the curriculum and the mapping. The grade eight text is the same for all levels. That's a big change. Right now, they have two different ones. So, it may be that when we have that discussion with the leadership at the middle high school for middle school, that there's a decision that all students should take the same. We don't know that.
Right.
But we do have that option of doing both or one.
Right. I have a question I have for the superintendent. Do we have, I know sometimes you don't find this out, but the Hingham and Duxbury, do they give you a reason why they're not going to go with park?
Duxbury wasn't there. I received that information in email, so I can't address Duxbury. The reason why Hingham isn't there and their board said they prefer to keep the MCAS is they just rather wait till the kinks are worked out.
Okay, simple.
Yeah. Just wanted to know.
Yeah.
A question, when it said that the math is, you know, fifty-eight percent said it was easy, forty-nine percent said it was hard, how large was the group of students answering the question?
This was a third grade group, so two third grade groups where the majority of the math has changed. Two classrooms, so I want to say forty-four students.
So, not a terribly large population.
Right. And, excuse me, just, and Mrs. Demas is probably used to, whenever they switch the math curriculum, there's the deer in the headlights approach. I mean, there are a lot of people get, like, kids in particular, this math anxiety thing. Because even though it's, and when they really take a deep breath and relax about it, it's really not that big of a deal. But, you know, I think that's part of it. You know, when you're taking an exam that has a different way of approaching it, sometimes people just, the kids get anxious about it. And we had that with the University of Chicago series when we switched over to that. And it was that, oh goodness, so different. And then people got relaxed about it.
I think the question is about technology as well. And if this is of any example, particularly I'm not a technology native, but these children are, and what they found with, in all districts, was that children who are taking the earphones and the keyboard portions were taking the earbuds off and getting rid of the keyboard.
Right.
Because that's not what they're accustomed to. They're accustomed to using the iPad keyboard and doing that using their own earbuds. And that's what they were doing. They were transferring all of this here, let's do it what we think is appropriate to what they natively know. So, I think that when they do the math, that will also transfer.
That makes sense.
But I, I think it's a combination. It's new, but the math is also very new.
Okay. There's several other districts, I know Burlington was one, and then was it Kennedy was the other, that did, were deliberately working with the publisher and everybody was given technology. They were given Chromebooks and iPads and laptops and desktops. And they're really analyzing where, where kids might have struggled, where it was easier, what they might need to tweak moving forward to assist the students. And when Eric Conti, the superintendent of Burlington, got up to speak, I mean, his greatest shock was, he said, we bought the headphones. And he said, the kids refused to use them. They weren't comfortable. He said, we bought the keyboards for the iPads, clicked them off immediately. And so, the assumption that we all think it's so hard to type on those boards and the reason for the keyboard was to make the picture large enough where the kids who aren't interested typed right on the keyboard, moved the picture around anyway to what they needed for their own accommodations. So, we have to recognize that students are telling us something. But we felt that for, because we are a small district, because we have the capability to implement this, that it would be to our advantage to see it. We realized, you know, if you wait a year, sure, you will see that other people might be working out kinks and the publisher will come back and look at some of the questions and look at some of the processes. But we feel it will be to our advantage to understand the test better now moving forward and work as they make the accommodations. It will also give our special ed students an opportunity to really adjust to it because that's a very different change. Currently, with the MCAS, students can take all day if they need to. And under the new arrangements, fifty percent of the allotted time. So, if the allotted time for a given test is an hour, students are only given ninety minutes. And so, we really have to figure out how to make that be a success for them.
So, I, I know we don't have to vote on it tonight, but we do next meeting, I think, it's June twenty-fifth.
Yes, so what the situation is, the Desi has given us all, all superintendents, till June thirtieth to submit a decision if we want to do the park. If we don't submit by June thirtieth, then if all the slots for the park are taken by other districts, we will be waitlisted. And if anybody drops out, we can maybe go in if an opening occurs. But we can't come into it. So, we really, if we want the park, it is to our advantage to input it before June thirtieth.
One thing that I thought would be great, seeing what you all think, is, you know, the, all the schools that you mentioned, some of them, I suppose, are in our non-geographic peer group. But one of the things, maybe we'll talk about the next meeting too, is looking at how we establish a peer group for, for us. Because oftentimes, we default to geography, which I think, you know, there's other ways to look at it, as we experienced, I think, in the good analysis that was done during budget season, where maybe our peer group for some things is the top schools in the state, like we are and that we strive to be. And maybe it's schools that are of our size. And perhaps sometimes it's schools that are geography, depends on what we're evaluating. This one feels to me like maybe we look at, if we could, get more information about, what are the other, you know, top ten schools doing? You know, whatever schools made the, both the Boston Magazine list and the U.S. News list that we kind of used to benchmark our budget against. Be interesting to see, can we get, can we reach out to those ten?
I can reach out.
Okay, that would be really helpful, I think.
It's to some extent, but a much more limited extent. Because I think testing is more of a psychological, educational situation that really doesn't have to do with the top ten schools or anything like that. It really has to do with almost an operational decision and a curriculum decision, you know, if we're ready and technology-wise and things like that. So, I beg to differ about that. It is interesting that the majority of them are going to the park. As a psychologist, I highly.
The majority of who are going to?
Of the South Shore schools are going to.
Not the top ten, we don't know that answer.
No.
No, but these ten, these ten school districts that Barbara indicated, you know, are leaning towards the park.
Correct. Some have already voted for it.
Yes. And my recommendation has to do with educational testing, which I am certified by, as being a licensed psychologist. I really think the more practice our children have, it's really to their benefit. And there are studies to say that that's the case. And if we're held harmless and we are also in a position that we can help the students who have special ed issues so they can practice and reduce anxiety, I think it's a win-win situation. So, I highly suggest that we go with the park. And I did a lot of research too about this, you know, a couple hours worth, in terms of just Googling some of my educational specialist colleagues, coming from, out of the box, not coming from school districts, but just coming from doctorate-level child psychologists and things like that. And I just told them about it and they don't know anything about park or whatever, but I told them the situation and they support, considering all the variables, that we go with the park. We go with something where we could practice, long as we're held harmless, long as our technology is it, and long as our core curriculum is at a fairly advanced state in terms of, you know, our curriculum is matching the core. I just think it's a, a very positive situation from what I know. And I do work with students in the high school, not in the elementary school so much, who come to me for test anxiety. And it's always helpful when we, I, I do in the office, a simulation of an MCAS or a simulation of this or that. I just think it's a win-win.
Yeah. Well, certainly the.
So, I highly support it.
The notion that practice tests are what Princeton reviews, Stanley Kaplan, they're all based on, practice gets you comfortable, reduces your anxiety and so on, so.
And it just, yeah.
Makes, makes sense. So, anyway, there's obviously two viewpoints here. So, we'd be interested to know the second.
I don't want to rush it, but.
Give back, just say a couple of, and the advantages looking through. One thing clearly, we've got to head start in the experience of what the assessment's going to look like, kind of the first page there. It also would help to understand, is there any problems that are encountered in the exam process? Whether it be technology or where are you going to hold or, you know, how many seats and very simple pragmatic things which would allow us to run it through a dry run. It's basically, it's a no-lose year. It's no risk, no loss year. So, you would have that as a, again, dry run. There is a special education addendum, a fifty percent extension. It's a shorter test. So, you technically get fifty percent more on the exam. So, I know that there's a modification with the MCAS special education option indeed, but I guess the, the other thing is, what if there is no MCAS? What else is out there? What else are we going to use as a standard for the district? There's not, there's not going to be a lot out there. And I, I guess from, from my point, unless there is another grand exam process, that's going to be constructed, I, I think it's worthwhile to try to, to try to do it for a year, dry run it, see what happens. If it gets voted down in October, it gets voted down in October. But I wonder if there's anything else out there that is similar to the park?
There is a smarter balance. Many of the states have adopted smarter balance, but whether we do that or not, there is a great deal of money invested in doing park. And there's a great possibility that players change. The governor changes, the commissioner changes, the committee changes within a year. And it may be that at that point, park is not what the governance wants. However, our children would still be ready for something different, even though it isn't park. That's my basic thought, is I'm, I'm ready for change. I can handle change.
Ready.
The big part. It's also important to understand that park is a longer testing window because we have to use the technology and move them in. But it's something that we have done because we have an entire calendar of assessment that we've worked with. And we use the data very religiously and we move curriculum through that. But it's important that you know that it's not a one-day test.
Right.
Or two-day test.
But it's, overall, it's a shorter exam period.
Shorter periods in time, correct. So, I don't know what it would look like for third grade. I think it's less of a time endurance. Will children have anxiety? They will always have anxiety.
Correct.
Will they do well? Will they do worse? I don't know. But it's definitely a change and it's certainly going to tell our children that things change, assessments change. The person in charge of working on the construction of park is Bill Daggett, who also works on the Common Core and who we have here. And it's what our instruction has as an underlying instruction base. So, it'll be interesting to see what happens. It's also very good for teachers to hear, what are we being assessed differently? And are we addressing the needs instructionally of that difference? It's a toss.
Any other thoughts from Mary or Jean?
Well, the only comment I wanted to make, what it seemed like in, in some respects, as well as just some of the logistics that we would have a little bit of a step forward on, would be to find if there are areas in the curriculum or our mapping that were not quite where they should be, that could give us, just make us better as a district, regardless of the exam.
We could do that in either.
Right.
Yes.
But it doesn't sound, it sounds like that the park is better equipped to assess the kind of curriculum mapping that you're doing now with that was Rubicon and, and all of those standards as opposed to a little bit more literal assessment that MCAS is, just from what you talked about?
What I did here today, and at least one comment, was that it's more critical thinking.
Mm-hmm.
And the fear was that children who would not do well would probably still not do well or not do as well. It is the current trend of more critical abstract thinking. Whatever we get, if it's not park, it will still have that.
Right, reflect that.
Right.
So, for whatever it's worth, I, I know there's, there's probably a bias to moving forward with park, although we'll vote on it perhaps in the next meeting.
Unless we want to vote on it now.
I personally, I, I don't feel like I have enough information personally. I'd like to learn a little bit more about what is, what is the reason people who aren't going with it, who we respect, our peer group in some fashion? Why aren't they doing it? You know, and I don't, I personally don't know enough yet. I, I appreciate the advantages of, that you've laid out, which are very helpful. But some really good schools aren't doing it. And it's, it would be nice to learn about why and, you know, just hear, hear their thoughts. Obviously, we're independent thinkers and we can do what we, what we think is, is best regardless of what others are doing, even if we're the only ones in the room doing it. But I at least don't feel like I have enough to make the decision yet.
Do you read the list, sir, from Mass?
Sometimes.
Because there's a lot of controversy on there about the park.
Right.
There's been a lot of chat on there about, you know, whether or not it's the right decision, whether or not it's the right way to change our testing. I'm actually, I've actually received calls from several other South Shore school committee members because they're just, they're confused too. And one person said to me, well, I would like to support the administration, but I really don't, I really don't understand it enough and know why. I mean, I've been in a classroom when MCAS prep was happening. So, I've seen the types of questions that get asked and the way that the students are trained to take the MCAS. We've seen nothing about park, other than, Desi reports.
The questions are online. If you go to T A R C C dot com or org, there are sample tests there. If you go to T A R C C dot com or org, there are sample tests there.
Can we maybe get one in our next packet so that we could?
The test itself?
Some sample questions.
We need to see how bad.
They're just like a link.
I need to go back to school.
Wait till you see. I can give you an example of
I took them.
MCAS eighth or grade ten math has no current answer. It has possible answers, which is the critical thinking part of how did you go about doing that? That's the difference. So it is that critical thinking piece that's very different.
I think that, yeah. I think, yeah, I think it's a really good idea. I mean, I took that MCAS and it was very interesting.
I think I need to start an individual math grade three. I don't know. Go way back.
And I took, I did some of the questions on the park and I agree with Dr. Paul. I'm Mrs. Davis. It definitely is where this country is going to, you know, our country is behind the times in terms of some other countries about critical thinking type of thing. I know in math, it's crucial. I mean, memorization, especially in this technology age, it's not, it's not going to happen in terms of, you know, getting to higher level math and stuff. You really need to be able to be a critical thinker. And it's so much info that our students have to digest. Critical thinking is crucial. So, you know, yeah, I think you all should, that's what I've been doing some nights. I go on and do some of the samples in the park.
I don't have a problem with sleeping.
And MCAS, and it's kind of cool, you know? I've been stumped by one or two things and then I call my son and then I feel like an idiot. But, you know, it's kind of cool.
We'll, we won't wait till the next packet. Mrs. Davis and I will pick out a few questions in periodically a few days. Why don't we drop one into your email?
Could be like the SAT question.
And then you have to answer and come back?
We'll give you thirty seconds. We'll upload a few questions to you, but we won't wait till the next packet. That way you have questions in between. You won't feel the pressure, only because between now, I'm only here between now and the sixteenth, and then I'm gone for eight days and then back and we're into the meeting, just forty-eight hours later. So I'd rather start uploading now if you have questions before I'm gone.
Thank you so much. Was there any other comment?
No, I thought that.
All right, so we'll move on to.
From what date?
Twenty. I'm out the seventeenth and I'll be home midnight on the twenty-third.
So you're going from the seventeenth to the twenty-third? And our meeting is on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, good, so we'll, I guess, get more data, do more research and make a decision, perhaps next meeting.
We will need a decision.
You don't have a choice.
We will have a decision next meeting.
I must have a voice from you at that point.
You don't have to.
Well, a voice to tell me yes or no.
Yeah, and then, and then we're, you know, if we do know and wait, we're impending, which I would want to be in there.
All right, so next item, I guess, are we going to circle back to the evaluation?
That would be fine. Appreciate it this way, Mrs. Davis, just the option to drive.
All right.
So let me just pull out. All right, so I know, I know that Mrs., Mrs. McAldrick did a good catch today. She discovered I didn't give you the last page. And so I know you had the first seven pages, but apparently she realized the last page eight wasn't there. So I uploaded the whole document again. It is the identical document from what you had, just the font is different.
We had the last page previously given to us.
You did, but I made copies in case you don't have it. You have it.
Yeah, I have it, so you could save it.
Okay, yep, I don't need it. All right, you have it already, all right.
So just by way of context, I guess, we had your presentation farther with the, at the last meeting, where you went through the feedback on the evaluation. And now, I guess, it's our turn to go through the, what is called Appendix B, ended cycle evaluation report. And we just, do we just start walking through it, page by page? And I guess ultimately, the goal here is to get through, get through this at least once tonight and then perhaps have more discussion as needed next week and have it compiled
The next time.
And voted on at the next meeting, June twenty-fifth.
That's John, you get to do it.
Exciting, yes.
I remember writing it.
All right, so why don't we just start off on the first page, which I guess is called page B two? Do you want to walk us through it or do we walk it through ourselves?
Well, I would suggest you do B two, because B two is summation.
It's a summary.
Start with page three, okay, let's get away. Okay.
In fact, I would suggest you go to page B five.
Yeah.
Because we know the superintendent's performance goal. And the summative evaluation report should be done at the end.
Which were the goals I presented to you.
Yes, so B five is where all the G's.
All right. And referencing the rubric, I don't know if everyone has it, but we have Appendix A, which is the, I guess, the rubric on how this should work. So, okay, so discussion on the first standard, instructional leadership.
Yeah, so we have read one, curriculum.
ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards. Standard-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. And we have four choices for the audience, the unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary.
Sure, what I did was, can I, can I?
Please.
What I did was I, for the whole instructional leadership, I gave the curriculum an assessive, assessment, proficient, and I gave the instruction, the evaluation, and the data-informed decision-making exemplary. And I said that our superintendent works well with Mrs. Davis in instructional leadership. And I think it's obvious that we have to do, well, we're continuing to do some work in assessment, but as the principal of the high school was saying, we need to, you know, get things more in line. We just need to work more on that. And in the curriculum, we're working on that, because, you know, we have, we're in the process of transition. So if the state's, you know, in flux, we're trying to work out things. So that's why I did two professions. And I, the exemplars were instruction and evaluation and informed decision-making. And then the proficient. And I think that in decision-making, you know, our superintendent has been working well with the stakeholders. So I, that's how I draw my decision.
Thanks. Jean.
So overall, in this category, instructional leadership, it was in the proficient area.
Okay. Great.
And I would agree with Dr. Lee in the, that the section is proficient. I don't know that I would rank anything exemplary, because I have a philosophical difference of opinion with others at this table about use of exemplary, as was discussed at the last evaluation cycle.
Okay, so across the board, for
I would say proficient.
Professions in all categories, okay? Paul.
Yeah, so the, I went to the five. I think curriculum is exemplary. I think we saw some great curriculum changes, some very good instructional staff design changes and implementation of that. I think the, again, I have kind of a question with the instruction assessment and evaluation. I think they're, I put them in proficient, because I think we, we, it's proficient because we're now top ten schools, so I think that's proficient for that. I'm hoping we keep going with that. There's always, the assessment's always a concern, where you want to try to assess things over and over again. I'm not sure how to come down with the best assessment of principals and administrators. That's always difficult. I think you've got some great hires, they're great people there. And assessment, I think, is probably one of the more difficult things, from my point of view, to review, because I don't see the, I don't see how you necessarily review them one-on-one behind closed doors. It looks like it's working great, so I, you know, I haven't seen the exemplary, but it's only because I haven't seen it. And I think that I know they're doing a great job, so it's always tough to decide about the assessment. Much along the same, along the lines of evaluation, a lot of it's done one-on-one. It's done interpersonally, it's done behind closed doors, it's discussion with, you know, within the administration. With the data-informed decision-making, I think it's exemplary. And there's numerous times where, looking at the state and district, the local levels of assessment, of school data, the assessment with various testing, with interaction with the towns, with everything like that, I think is exemplary. So three out of five comes down as proficient. But I think, three of those I think are tough to assess.
Paul.
I actually have everything listed as proficient in terms of instructional leadership, but I would just like to comment that in terms of the curriculum and the data-informed decision-making, it really seems like we're moving towards exemplary. And so many really wonderful, wonderful changes. And then just also some small changes, just in terms of things like the middle school moving to a trimester, which will, will help with the curriculum development, I think, for the students. The report cards being developed a little bit differently, you know, in grades K through two. And I think that's still a process. So I wish there were more categories in which to judge, because these are kind of unsatisfactory on a whole bunch of levels. But overall, it would be a proficient ranking.
Call the commissioner.
I will.
Okay, and, yeah, and I, it's coming out on the, on the curriculum. I put us down, or put you down as exemplary. In the instruction, I also, I also thought that was exemplary. On the assessment and the evaluation and the data-informed decision-making, I put down proficient. So like, you know, like you three, three to five, proficient, two to five exemplary, I went with overall instructional leadership proficient. Okay. So management and operations.
So is it team, we came up with proficient?
Yes, five, I think it's five.
Is it helpful just to give you all the sheets for that one?
Sure, that'd be great.
That would make it easier. So we know we're done with that.
Thanks.
They don't have our names on them though, Hallie? I think it's best to keep it all in one package together.
Oh, do we need to have our names on it?
If you look at the front page, you have, you sign it, so I think we need to keep it together.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so standard two is management and operations. And I guess, want to just start off again, or do you just keep going around?
Sure, I'll start off. So standard two. What did I do? Let's say, management, operation, environment, develops and executes exit plans, procedures, or operational system, I said exemplary. Human resource management and development. Well, it's between actually environment, proficient and exemplary. Because there's so many aspects in that, you know? We're trying to deal with some operational systems, you know, that we are in the flux about. We're just going through the whole block scheduling thing. And so it's in between proficient and exemplary, so. And human resource management, the hiring, the development career things. I think most of the hiring I get, so, I don't know. I would say proficient to exemplary. It would be like in the middle. And the scheduling and the law, ethics and policy and fiscal systems. The budget, that's pretty much in Mr. DeGeneres' area, even though, of course, David's area, but you definitely are familiar with it. So I just did for this whole area, I would say I gave proficient, with some leading towards exemplary in the environment and HR area. So that's how we did it.
Okay.
And the federal laws and mandates, I mean, that's a real hard one, because we're caught between a rock and a hard place. I mean, with the whole notion of, well, what you have to deal with, with all the unions and things like that. I mean, it's really hard. I think, considering you got a proficient in that, that's like an A plus for a superintendent. Because that's a pain, you know? Especially being more familiar these days with school law than I ever wanted to be in my entire life. So I think a proficient is a good accomplishment in that.
Okay.
So overall, I would say proficient.
Sorry, I didn't get your fiscal systems, was that?
The fiscal, the last three were proficient and the first two were proficient, but leaning towards exemplary. So overall, it's proficient in this area.
Thank you.
For the reasons I gave.
So environment, I'm not going to expound on why I chose certain things. Some of them I will. So under environment, I selected proficient. Under develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a whole range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. I did not select anything under fiscal systems, because again, Mrs. Cataldo works very closely with Mr. DeGeneres on the budget. I believe that there have been some, I've had some questions on some of the decisions that were made at the end of last year, purchasing-wise. But I don't believe that they were in Mr. DeGeneres' purview, so we're not rating Mr. DeGeneres right now. So I did not select anything for that. Under scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics, and policies, I selected proficient. But under human resources, management, and development, I selected needs improvement, because I did have some concerns about some decisions that have been made this year.
Okay, so I think I missed your, I had your C, schedule and management information systems?
Proficient.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so environmental, I put proficient. There's always ways to improve with effective plan, procedures, and routines and the usual things, whether it's operational or whether it's, you know, social media and things like that. I put exemplary for human resources. I think, working with you over the last year, there have been some incredibly difficult decisions that have been done and I think you did a very good job. And I saw from the situation of being as the chair, a lot of decisions that were extremely difficult and had to be made and were made, I thought was a very, very effective, you know, resources. Scheduling and management information system, I put proficient. Scheduling is always a problem. It's always difficult with the information system in this district. I think a bit, you know, the hamstrung situation here with the information system overlapping in different information systems, that's always been a problem. That's not going to change soon, but I hope it will over the course of time. We will develop new information systems in general, I think IT-type support. Law and ethics, I put proficient. I think that's, it's been quite fine, there's been no major catastrophes. The law one is always, you know, it's always, you talk to the House Counsel for an awful lot of assistance and help with that. I saw no problems with it. The fiscal system, I think, was exemplary. I really, working so closely with you this year on budget, it was a very difficult budget year at the county level, at the local level, in the school, and in the overall budget. It works as a team, you guys work as a team. I think you're the point on the spear from the point of view that the fiscal responsibility ends with you, with a lot of support. It was a very difficult year and I was delighted with the effects and the outcome, so I put exemplary. So I guess it's three to two proficient, but I wouldn't be like Dr. Lee, leaning towards exemplary on that.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi. I landed with proficient in all the categories. And in terms of environment, in the first one though, I'd like to say definitely leaning towards exemplary. And there were just a few things there in the rubric that we have, just talking in terms of that, about things like mentoring programs for new teachers and just the teach-the-teacher model, that all of the stuff that's happening with Atlas was very impressive to me. And also just in terms of the environment that is being created within individual buildings, I think a lot of it is giving your administrators permission to create their environment, which is really reflected, especially in the high school, I think, right now. So that was very impressive to me.
Thank you. So I, for environment, I thought this almost went hand in hand with just some of the fiscal challenges that we had, but creating an environment, this was a tough year. And I thought you were exemplary in the way you managed to keep the operational environment, I thought, pretty positive and with some difficult challenges, including the fiscal challenges and other things we faced. Similarly, for HR, management, and development, I've been very impressed with the implementation of various hiring procedures. One of the things that I know, I personally was concerned about, was making sure we keep staff and make sure that we have a process that includes a cultural fit and bringing families and, you know, people outside just the school administration into the process. And I think that's been pretty effective. So I actually put exemplary for that too. For scheduling and management information systems, I thought it was proficient. Same with law, ethics, and policies. We obviously have to lean on the experts there, like our attorney, who we try to minimize usage of, because it's so costly and you use that judiciously and you have a good grasp of things. So you can handle a lot of things without having to call the lawyers, so that was proficient. And on fiscal systems, again, I thought it was exemplary. Obviously, as a team, you know, we lean a lot on Dave and he's terrific. And, but ultimately- Uh, obviously, as a team, uh, you know, we, we lean a lot on Dave, and he's terrific, uh, and, but ultimately, you know, the buck stops with the superintendent, and, um, I thought we went through a pretty challenging time and we convinced, um, the community at large of our needs, uh, and, and developed a budget that was in line with it. So I thought that was exemplary. So three to two, uh, on exemplary versus proficient, so I went with exemplary on management operations.
But if you add all, you know, if it's proficient to the team?
Right, so it looks like we have four proficiencies, one exemplary, so proficient as a, as a team. And actually, can I go back one? I think I caught, e- everybody was proficient, right, on the overall rating for the standard one?
Yes, yes.
Alright.
And now for standard two?
Standard two, the same.
And now I want to say three?
Okay, standard three, family and community engagement.
Do you want me to start off?
Please.
Okay.
You like.
Yeah, I like this one. Uh, the engagement, actively, uh, the families, I, I wrote in between proficient and exemplary. I think, you know, it's a s- uh, small district and everything like that, but there's a lot of different stuff going on, and I think that our superintendent tries to, to engage all of the stakeholders and attends, you know, basically, even living in Cohasset, so, um, it's almost illegal that your address is someplace else. So, you know, in terms of like your scene, and you de- definitely have been trying to be part of the community. So, uh, and, you know, some people have some, it, it's hard to get that because there's so many aspects of the community, so I think it's in-between proficient, heading towards exemplary. Sharing responsibility, um, with the stakeholders, yeah, I think that, uh, that's been a challenge because of so many of the, uh, we've had so many different town managers and, and the leadership in other areas in the town. You've been trying to work on that. I consider all the politics, what you had to deal with, it, uh, you, you got a proficient for me, but that's like an A plus in Cohasset. Really. And the communication, yeah, I think, uh, you, you've definitely improved in communication, uh, so I think it's a solid proficient. Family concerns, I think you're exemplary, uh, in family concerns. So, uh, I think, uh, you do that in efficient manner, usually attend to any of the hot buttons that are going on in the district, uh, very, very quickly. So, uh, overall, it's proficient, but, uh, uh, one definitely exemplary, one heading towards exemplary. So overall, proficient. Okay?
Okay, under engagement, actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community, contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community. I rated you proficient. Sharing responsibility, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at homeschool and in the community. Also proficient, because you have worked quite a bit this year with various town, um, boards and in making sure that our budget was supported. Under communication, engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. I ranked you proficient. Under family concerns, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and in, in efficient manner. I have had a lot of feedback throughout this last year about people who feel that, um, you don't respond in a timely fashion, although you do respond, um, and I know that you've told me in the past that you like to sit on things for a bit. I think that that doesn't necessarily go over well with some members of the community, so.
Could I ask if you could define what you could call timely?
What?
Could you define timely?
I think that waiting one or two days before you respond is sometimes problematic for people in the community. I know, I object to it, so, and I, and I know that others do also. So I would say needs improvement on that, one small piece. I do know that you, however, that you do go out of your way if you find that someone has a disagreement with something to, um, bring them into the fold. So, overall, I would rank you proficient, uh, but I would work a little bit more on the family concerns.
Your, Paul?
Paul? Yep. So, um, I mean, Dave, you shared this on clearly communication, family concerns. I think this is, this is clearly, I think, in my view, uh, your strong point. And the classroom, the district committee has been exemplary. I think there are numerous times where you were engaged in various, um, organizations in town, there's different boards in town, different meetings, um, lots of, uh, events in town, you're always there, I think it's fantastic. The shared responsibility, I think you've gotten the family and the community stakeholders involved quite nicely compared to, um, many other superintendents both here and elsewhere that I, uh, run across. So I put that as exemplary, communication. Always, uh, I think, again, hamstrung by the, uh, communication network in the, in the district, um, and we're working on that. I think that, uh, we'll put down as proficient. With the family concerns, um, I, I have a different view. I look at, uh, effectively, that equitable, efficient manner that you've dealt with families. I think sometimes waiting a day, sleeping on it, is a good thing, and sometimes, um, pulling the trigger with a, a rapid response isn't always the best thing, so, um, I understand there may be families out there that wants a immediate response. Sometimes, um, addressing it with some concern that is, um, with a tincture of time is better served. So I put exemplary on that, so, uh, three out of four, uh, would be exemplary, so I would down exemplary.
Yep. I would agree with Paul in that I really think this is your gift, and I think it's been a great asset to the community. In terms of engagement, ensuring that all families are welcome members, a lot of what happened here during the budget cycle this year was able to happen because you welcomed different groups in and people in, and I think it made us better as a school committee. Um, it made us work the budget numbers a little harder. Um, and they're not always easy conversations, but it's because you opened the door. So I really, I thought that was absolutely exemplary. I think you do a beautiful job collaborating with, uh, families and community stakeholders, much the same as one. I ranked that as exemplary. I think the communication is excellent. We had a, a couple hiccups, um, just in terms of the trip, but I think there were a few pieces along that line, um, that needed correcting, so we learned our lesson, hopefully. I rated that as proficient. And in terms of family concerns, I think not only from, from your office, in terms of the administrative office, but also the principals, I put you in between proficient and exemplary, because I think you do set the model there, um, but have just had really terrific experiences. So I'm smack dab in the middle because there's only four questions.
So, overall, would you lean toward exemplary or proficient?
I would, in this category.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I, uh, similarly to, at least Mary and, and others, uh, believe that, uh, this is really your strong point. I think the amount of engagement that you have with the community is terrific. You're sort of everywhere all the time, and that's really important, because, uh, whether it's, uh, kindergartners or, uh, parents who've had three kids come through the system, the, it's really great, I think, for them to see how involved you are. And you know a, a ton of kids by name, a lot of those parents by name, and that's pretty impressive. So I, I put exemplary for engagement. Sharing responsibility, I think, again, you know, demonstrated by the process that we went through, it was, you know, it was again limited to the budget, but it, it reaches across all aspects of the school. I thought that, uh, you know, you had a lot of demonstration for your willingness to collaborate with people, and, uh, I put proficient there. Uh, communication, similarly, I thought the communication was really good. The, we've ramped up, I think, direct communication through Blackboard Connect or whatever it's called now, and the, uh, and the other, uh, methods that we've had, ranging from, you know, coming to parent meetings to one-on-ones. So I put exemplary in communications. And I put, uh, for family concerns, I put proficient, uh, really mostly because I just think that establishing, uh, fairness and things is, you know, you're... To me, I just, I don't understand how you can be more than proficient at being fair. So, um, so I just had a psychological conundrum there, but, um, overall, I, um, although I was two to two, I would lean toward, uh, the things where you really, you're really exemplary on things where I thought, uh, you were exemplary. So I, I put you in exemplary category for the overall. So that puts, uh, three to two exemplary, so on this, I guess we default to, uh-
Well, we're kind of in the middle because of the fact that half of the things that each of you had was proficient and half was exemplary. So it's like right smack dab.
So since we only can pick one, if we had to boil our positions down to exemplary or proficient, I guess maybe we just ask, like, would you, where would you fall out?
Proficient.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient?
That was the last one, yeah, exemplary.
Exemplary.
I would fall down as exemplary.
Exemplary, and I was exemplary, so I guess we'll-
Right.
Exemplary, okay. So standard three is exemplary.
Right.
Alright. Moving on to professional culture, let's start again, Helene.
Sure. Okay, uh, this is the last one.
Yes.
And let's see, I gave them all proficient except the first, commitment to higher stand, high standards, and, um, our superintendent is definitely committed to the highest standard. And the cultural proficiency, you know, it's hard. I mean, you try to work with all the different cultures and stuff, we don't have a lot of cultural diversity, however, in this school system. I mean, you try to work with Neco and things like that, um, it's just, we don't have a diverse environment, so how do you rate somebody when our envi- my environment's not diverse? So, you're proficient, because you're not really tested on it in that way. Communication and interpersonal skills, yeah, I mean, there's been some misunderstandings, but all in all, uh, it's definitely proficient. Continuous learning? You know, I, I wish you got your doctorate.
It should be done this year.
Yeah. And, you know, uh, I know that you're working on it and things like that, so, uh, uh, that's proficient. Yeah, and I think that, uh, you certainly have the intelligence to, to go the distance, because it's, uh, important for the community, that we're an educational community, that, um, you, yeah, I know that you've worked so hard here, and I know what it's like to work full-time and work on the doctorate, because I was in your same position. So that's hard.
You might want to finish it for me, huh?
Yeah, right. So you get a proficient, which is pretty cool, because since you're working full-time and you're working on your doctorate. A lot of people would be unsatisfied or you need improvement in that situation, or they'd be just going like moving. And shared vision, we're working on that. I mean, it's hard to get everybody on the same page, so I gave her proficient. And managing conflict, well, conflict resolution, uh, for a superintendent, that's a, a challenge, and you get a proficient, which is like an A plus, you know, because that's a really hard thing. I think to, to be exemplary, you have to be a conflict resolution specialist, and, you know, you're not that, but you're certainly proficient, and it's part of what you do. So, that all, all in all, I do proficient.
And, Helene, that was, uh, exemplary on the first one and proficient on the rest?
Proficient on the rest, exactly.
Okay, um, the first item, commitment to high standards, um, I was kind of on the line between proficient and exemplary because this is a district with very high expectations for all and always has been. So who wouldn't be committed, um, to expecting, um, to learning and high expectations for achievements for all? So I would go with proficient, just based on background for that particular, um, item. Under cultural proficiency, I went with proficient. Under communications, demonstrate strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. I think that you have improved this year. I, so I ranked you proficient. You may recall that when I was the chairperson, I recommended, and vice chair, I recommended that you start some kind of a little PR campaign to kind of get out there, so I'm very happy to see that you have done that this year and, um, have had parent coffees and reached out, and that you are attempting to keep people more in the loop with the Blackboard Connect messages. Under continuous learning, I agree with Dr. Lee about your doctorate expectation, so I am hopeful that you will have it this year, so I have given proficient in that aspect. Shared vision, um, I did select proficient. Under managing conflict, employ strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict and building consensus throughout a district or school community. I have selected needs improvement, and I'm sure you know why. So overall, your ranking in this section is proficient.
Okay. So I'll, I'll go through, uh, commitment to high standards, I think is exemplary, and I think that, um, the shared commitment to high standards is there. The results are there, um, both in any of the rankings, as well as any of what the children are doing when they come out of here. So I put exemplary, I think that not only are the commitments, but there clearly are the objective evidence that it's working. Cultural proficiency, I, um, I'd go with Helene on that one, I think it's, um, we have kind of a white bread, um, pan here. And I think you're right, I mean, it's tough to, it's tough to balance and tough to decide on that, so I put, uh, proficient. Communications, um, as always, I, I think, um, unless somebody is a, a super, uh, communication person, that I would go with proficient, um, I think there's always ability to help with communications and improve. The continuous learning, I, I took a different tack, I, I look at this as, uh, supporting what the staff members, what the students, and what someone would do as a model for achieving continuous learning, and I think, um, my, my doctorate was kind of stuck in, in four years and we kind of had to do it in four years, but doctorates, um, can take many years, and that, um, that doesn't worry me, I know working towards it full-time, uh, as somebody who's done it, working full-time, it's not easy. So, I looked at it from nurturing the culture, which is there, and so I put exemplary, because I think, um, working full-time and doing that, what you're doing, I think is exactly what you, um, desire for, the culture, what you're developing. The shared vision, I, I think it's exemplary as well. I believe that the shared vision of engaging all the stakeholders, like we saw this year, in both the budget and the development of new curriculum, um, and the shared educational vision of trying to get into the top ten, which we achieved, so I think it's exemplary. Managing conflict, um, I'll, I'll leave this one up to you, I, I, I don't manage conflict well, I don't like conflict, and, um, I gave you a proficient because unless someone is a hostage negotiator, doesn't get exemplary. So I come down-
Maybe that'd never be my role.
So I come down three to three. I would lean towards you again, exemplary though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mine actually models Helene's on this score. Commitment to high standards, I think that's fairly obvious, that was exemplary. Again, cultural proficiency, I think we've covered that one. I think your communication this year's been excellent. Obviously, I was a little more closely attuned to it than I was in years prior, um, but I have that down as, um, proficient. In terms of continuous learning, for me, there were two parts to that. There was fostering continuous learning of staff and administrators and also of, of self. So, um, what I was able to see, um, just in terms of mentoring programs and how you're encouraging staff in that manner, I felt like was exemplary. In terms of your own, I feel like you're on proficient track there, so I would kind of fall in the middle on that one. In terms of the shared vision, um, you know, I went through and I looked at your artifacts, um, just in terms, and I was very interested in seeing, just in terms of the leadership meetings, um, and getting everybody on the same page. That was very impressive, how those agendas are built and so forth. I have you as proficient there. And then managing conflict, I think you do it beautifully within the community and with stakeholders. And that's what we're able to see, for, for the most part. I feel like our attorney does a lot of the rest of that, so, um, I have you a proficient on that category as well. So overall, landed on the proficient side.
Right, thank you. So, um, I thought the commitment to high standards, uh, was exemplary. I think we all share that, uh, that objective, it's terrific, that you pushed that agenda forward. Cultural proficiency, I put as proficient. Communications, you know, echoing the comments from before, I've been very pleased with that, uh, personally, and, uh, my experience is only very positive on that, and I put exemplary.
On which one?
On the communications.
Oh, what was cultural proficiency?
That was a proficient. And moving to continuous learning, um, I put proficient. I'm excited that you're going to finish your doctorate this year as well, I know that's a-
Right.
-great priority for you and for, uh, and that we've all expressed that. Shared vision, um, yeah, so I, I thought that was, uh, exemplary, because I think that the community really came together, and we dealt with a variety of stakeholders, uh, especially when we're balancing a budget, and- And I thought you did a terrific job on that, and managing conflict, I put as proficient. Uh, so overall, uh, I had, uh, three, uh, exemplaries and one, two, three proficients. So I was, I was kind of leaning toward, um, exemplary, uh, or proficient, and I guess, you know, with a
The team is proficient.
Yeah, hold, the team, the team is, uh, also proficient, right, so I, I'll put myself down as, um, exemplary and with, with a three, with a three to two.
So it's proficient.
With proficient overall.
Yep.
Okay, so now we circle back to the, uh, to the sort of summary.
Right, so we have three proficient, uh, and one exemplary.
Right, so in summary, we have instructional leadership proficient, management and operations proficient, family and community engagement exemplary, and professional culture proficient. So, I guess, Hel- Helene, do you want to, uh, move through this first piece, or is this just a summary that we do later?
Is this just something that you fill out?
Maybe that's all.
I think it is.
Yes, that's what you fill in.
Okay, so I'll take all the feedback and write that up.
Right, that's what you get to do.
Exciting.
Um. Well, the, um.
Goals.
The goals, that part, um, it is step one on page B two, I could just add, um, assess progress towards goals, this is the final part, I guess. Because we decided the, um, on page B two, the instructional leadership overall is proficient, management and operations overall proficient, family and community en- engagement was exemplary, and professional culture, I believe, was proficient, so it was three proficient and one, uh, exemplary. And then in, uh, towards goals, uh, it was hard to, you know, like, we had to match up the, uh, 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 superintendent can tell those goals with professional practice goals, I wrote, uh, some progress, the student learning goals, significant progress, and district improvement goals, significant progress. And pro- professional practice goals, there's just a lot going on there, uh, that had to do with, you know, uh, standards, uh, and, oh, just in professional practice, to me, had to also do with administrative leadership skills and things like that, and there's been definitely some progress. But student learning goals and district improvement plan goals, we, we, I think as a district, it's been obvious, we've made significant progress, so that's how I, I did that. They, some of the superintendent's goals didn't align exactly with those three categories. Uh, district improvement, two of her goals were kind of in that, to develop social and emotional growth is a district improvement, in my opinion. But it's also student learning, I mean, they fall in a couple of different categories, they don't match up exactly in one area, they really are in two areas. That one goal, infrastructure support, uh, district values, that's a district goal, obviously, and that's what I wrote, s- uh, significant progress. And to advance standards-based learning, you know, that was significant progress. So the first one, professional practice, there wasn't a goal specifically in that, but I know that that's an area where you have made some progress. So it, it was a little confusing. Do you understand, her goals didn't quite align?
Yeah.
Two of her, two of the superintendent's goals were in district improvement and one was in student learning. And in all those, I wrote significant progress. And professional practice goals, there wasn't a specific one that aligned, uh, would fall under professional practice, except I know what professional practice is, and I said, she's made some progress. So that's, uh, as best as I could do for that.
Can, can I see your page for a second, Helene, because I want to make sure I've got, uh, the right.
Yeah, this is that page. In the summative evaluation report, I added a value to comments and I said, um, our superintendent fits along, uh, very well with building principles and other administrators. Our superintendent works well with the curriculum staff, the depart- uh, director of student services, and the business manager. And more improvement with faculty relations, technology, and district-wide assessment, and smoother transitions, I taught between fifth and sixth grade and some other. And then I wrote, uh, complete doctorate, but so, you know, those are my overall comments. So I'm going to give you everything, okay?
All right.
All my homework, this is it, and I sign it.
Thank you, very much.
And this is just blanks, so you can recycle those, or I could just keep it for keepsake.
Well, figure that.
Thanks.
I'm going to say, um, and give all my five, six years of school committees, so there should be a, to some.
You should run again.
Going to do that.
Helene, uh, Jean.
Oh, my hair firm's gray, that means that I haven't done it and I noticed I'm graying. So under step one, assess progress towards goals, um, I took a little different tack with that, and I actually went through the goals, and I will read them for anybody who didn't catch them before. Develop social and emotional growth, to establish a healthy community for all students that allow them to be productive citizens in a global society that supports empathy, honesty, integrity, and compassion. I think we have, um, we have met some, um, some challenges and done some good work in the global society section. Um, so I selected met in that, for that goal. Under teaching and learning, to advance standards-based learning by putting into practice a system of curriculum, instruction, and assessment that empowers each student to be engaged in challenging academic experiences that are grounded in clearly defined standards. Um, I selected significant progress in that area.
Dude up.
Because we're working really hard through the curriculum mapping and making sure that everything aligns, coming into, um, aligning everything also with the N E S C concerns, to make sure that, you know, everything's kind of focused on there. So I chose significant progress on that one. And also, infrastructure supports district values and learning goals, to initiate the process of building a susta- a sustainable plan for financial building, technological, and human resources that enhances our learning goals and is responsive to student and school needs. I think we still have a long way to go, um, we have a ways to go technologically, and we do have a long ways to go in the human resources area. So I selected significant progress there.
Me too.
Yeah, as far as assess performance on standards, you know, I, I mean, we already, we already did that, so I didn't fill out that section because it all aligns with what we've already, it was redundant.
So Jean and I are on the same page in two, the district goals and the, um, student learning.
A lot of what's in this document is a little redundant.
We both wrote significant.
It's a difficult tool to use.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, professional, um, practice goals, I, I thought they were met, um, student, uh, learning goals, I thought they were met, you know, honestly, they, they all have the, uh, the goals and the students as they come out have done well. And they have great objective evidence that the, um, the learning is going on. Um, district improvement goals are between met and exceeded because I think the, the district itself has done incredibly well in the last year. Um, we have clear evidence objectively with various views of objective testing, um, where the children are, are off to, to college, how the development of the curriculum has been done, so although its infrastructure support is under the district improvement, I took a little bit more leeway there because I think the district improvement goals are not just that. They're what the result of the students, uh, doing, and what they've accomplished and with the
Right, student learning.
the entire, um, district, both staff and, um, you know, all the members that are involved in that district, in our district, um, do. So I, I put, um, met, but I'm leaning towards exceeded, but I, I would say met because I think it's a, it's a broad, um, portion of it when you look at the improvement of the district. I think, to my view, it's, it met all my expectations.
Great. And then step, I guess the step three, is there o- overall summative process based on one and two? If, I guess you have rank, proficient or.
We already did that.
Yeah.
So that's the overall, okay, okay, fine, so, great.
Yeah, we already did that.
All right, thank you, Mary?
Um, in terms of professional practice goals, um, I have met, I think, um, you really set some nice goals and I think we came a, a long way in, in obtaining those. Um, in terms of student learning goals, I would say we made significant progress, um, and, and I think that's a very positive thing, I think we're on the way, um, and that is great. Um, in terms of district improvement goals, we're hamstrung a little bit just by some, you know, pickups with facilities sometimes and technology sometimes, uh, but I think we are also pointed in the right direction and we've made significant progress, and that's a very positive thing, can only affect so many things at one time, so.
Thank you. So I, uh, brevity, I had met on, on all three, and we already covered the rest, so.
So we're kind of on significant progress from, with summary.
Yeah, okay, so to summarize, all right, so we have, uh, in professional practice, we have some progress from Helene, um, met from the rest of us. Uh, student learning, we have significant progress from Helene, Jean, and Mary, and met from Paul and myself. And then for district improvement, the same.
Yeah, so two significant progress and one kind of.
Kind of met.
Met.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so we have pretty much consensus in a lot of points, so it is interesting, and a lot of real stellar stuff going on.
So I think that concludes this, and I guess just overall, uh, it's never easy to be evaluated, and especially in a public forum. And we really appreciate your willingness to, to tolerate this requirement, and, um, we think you've done a great, you know, a very good job, I'd say, I can speak for myself, and obviously we've heard from what everybody thinks. And, uh, I appreciate all of your work for the district, thank you.
Thank you. Right, do you want to be sample?
If you could, please, thanks.
Any, uh, plenty, you don't have to, but anything that's written.
I scribble them.
I'd like you to know you're ruining my weekend, but, by giving this to me.
No, you have a couple of weeks.
When is this due back?
The twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth, we have to vote on the compiled version.
Yes.
And the compiled version has to be in the, uh, in the books, so the Friday before, right?
No.
Or no, we could bring it, we just bring it.
No, you bring one copy only.
Okay.
You bring everything together, one copy, but you have to bring all of our backup information also.
And put it all underneath.
And put it together.
But Paul, if you struggle with it, you're allowed to talk to one of us and only one of us.
Okay.
So I wrote it a couple of times, so I could volunteer to be your support person, you can't talk to anybody else then.
Anybody else, I appreciate that.
So you could choose, you know, what, I like to, I end up doing this a lot in profession, so I, I wouldn't mind just helping you in terms of like, just how to write the thing.
Right.
Well, you have all the evidence, I mean, it's just easy.
Right, well, thank you for the.
It's, e- e- I mean, you have all the, the stuff, all the ingredients to make the pot, it's just a little hard sometimes to do.
I'd help you with my writing this.
Doctor-esque.
I write things for my office and being therapists, they have a hard time, and you do outcome measures and writing.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, so, uh, we'll keep moving on with the agenda here, and, uh, what's next, the studies committee?
Yeah, the study committee, so in your packet, you have a piece called Appendix B. And, uh, this comes right out of the collective bargaining agreement for the Cohasset Teachers Association, and if you noticed on the third page,
There's just one.
there's a paragraph about during the term of this contract, going into the last year. The association committee agreed to establish a subcommittee to study the stipend allocation set forth in Appendix B and to make any recommendations to the parties as it deems, as it deems appropriate, as to any amendments to Appendix B, the study committee shall be composed of up to three members.
What did they carry on?
On the last page. On the last page of the appendix.
No, not that.
No, what do we mean?
Appendix B, with the figures on it.
The extracurriculum.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Third one.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, it says that the study committee shall be composed of up to three members designated by the association and up to three members designated by the committee. In the event the study committee's recommendation is to modify such allocations, such recommendations will be referred to the parties for further negotiation. So I, I received a request from Mrs. McGrail, um, I'll have to go back, I'm going to venture guess it was about six weeks ago, asking to negotiate uh, this appendix B, but the reality is you need to have a study committee between the association and the committee before you can get to that point.
Right.
When looking at these, and so I have, uh, asked Mrs. McGrail for some times just to, for the purpose of told her we could bring it to the committee tonight and asked her if she had any meeting times available in mind that I could also bring to the committee once the committee decided who would serve on that committee as the study.
We have three of us?
Well, it would be myself and, and two others.
Two of us.
Dean from the committee, you can either use your negotiating committee or you can decide, otherwise it's completely up to you as a committee. And, uh, once that's done, Mrs. McGrail gave me, um, June fifth and June ninth, but I explained to her that it can't be the fifth since you need forty-eight hours to post. So she left me with June ninth at four o'clock, and I told her I would bring that time to all of you, but it might not necessarily be convenient, and if it were not, then I would bring times back to her. So that is the point we are at.
Okay, so first and foremost, I guess we should just agree, it seemed to make the most sense for, you know, the negotiating committee to negotiate this too, which is, uh, Helene and I, unless anyone objects to that. And then, okay, and then we'll have, of course, Barbara would be our third, right, so. Okay, and then, in term, June ninth, I, I.
That's Monday.
Yeah.
I, I, maybe that's.
Monday.
I mean, I have to post tomorrow if that were really going to happen, but I
That's really hard.
I know it's very short notice and I was well aware of that, but I also said I would collect dates in the event that that was not doable, and I certainly understand that on calendar.
Uh, you know, I don't know how urgent it is, but of course, uh, given that we're, we're here on the twenty-fifth, um, I personally, if they wanted to do it during, at four o'clock, I could come much earlier before the school committee.
Wednesday, June twenty-fifth.
Yes, that would be.
I'll bring that back to her.
That one, okay.
Okay, not a problem, I'll, I'll send that out tomorrow.
Does it at, uh, four o'clock, or can we do it, uh, five, maybe four is, uh.
I think they want to do four because
Yeah, they like four.
Their, their own schedule.
That's after, that's after school is out. It, that may, they may not like that.
Oh, 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 after school's not for good, right?
Well, less, I'll bring back, if not, I'll be back, I, I appreciate that too, yep, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's tough.
We didn't last just no day, we'd still be going.
Right.
Uh, so I'll.
I could do it the eighteenth.
Me too.
I work, um.
I will not be here.
Okay, so that's.
I will work.
All right.
When are you leaving again?
Seventeenth.
Oh, okay.
Skype. From the beach.
Okay.
I'm afraid there's no reception.
So you'll let us know.
So sorry.
I could do four o'clock on June eleventh at this point, I just gotta be, I, I could only meet for an hour and a half.
June eleventh?
June eleventh, I have to be, go back to work, I, um, I have to leave the, uh, Cohasset by five thirty.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I can't.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll try, I guess, the eight, the twenty-fifth.
I'll bring the twenty-fifth to her, and if that's not true, so I will come back.
And if I have to do it during the school year, we'll find another time.
Yeah, I will, uh, communicate that.
Yeah, because, you know, just doing it on Monday, I mean, it's hard to say, oh, I can't see.
I don't think there's a, a specific endpoint, it's during the time, the, uh, life of the contract, so we have one more year left on the contract.
So there's no urgency as to having it done Monday?
I am not aware of any urgency.
Right.
I mean, obviously, I think the, the association might to get it started, but at the same time, we all have to recognize everybody's busy.
Yeah, it's less than a week, and I plan, I plan out, I, I do plan my clients a week in a week, at least one to two weeks in a week.
Okay.
So listed in here are not the Model U N or the robotics.
We cannot add anything in at this time, we'd have to bring it to the table and ask them if they want to add it in, I just brought, because it's a study committee, that would be a topic for the study committee, obviously, I, but I wouldn't, I just gave you what's in the book presently.
Yeah, my question, are there any other volunteer positions that are similar to the robotics or Model U N that you're aware of?
French exchange. French exchange.
Yep.
And, um, the, the sailing team, is that?
I think that is paid.
Paid.
Yeah.
How about the fa- the famous dressage team, which was my very first meeting of the squad? I think that's been broadened to say equestrian now.
Yes, it has.
But I don't.
So we could.
Supposed to be, um, uh, it's, isn't it supposed to be self, you know?
Volunteer.
Yeah, but the following year, it could exist.
So those could be topics that are brought up during the study, absolutely.
I just, again, for, for those sorts of ones that are not included yet but have been new, added in the last, since the beginning of the contract that was signed in two thousand twelve, um, might be helpful to just to consider adding them.
Right, so I've made some notes here, the, the ones that you recommend before.
Good point.
Because some of them are on their own, kind of free willingly, without a payment.
Okay, and I get to. A lot of, go ahead, please.
Hi, um, Ellen Marcy's Deputy Director.
Hi, Ellen Marcy, Deputy Coach Bureau. On that, it's, my understanding that even if a varsity sport, which I believe sailing is, is self-funded for the first three years, as is the rule, the stipend is still determined by the collective bargaining agreement, is that not correct?
I don't know.
So.
It is.
So the position should be in the appendix, whether the school is funding it or not?
No, not, not, it doesn't automatically get added in because each year the amount of money, well, for the contract, a certain amount is allotted. And so they have to work, the association has to work within the allotted money, so they can add it in, but then they have to redefine all the other positions.
Right.
That's what we've come up with.
There's a certain amount of money in the contract and it divided accordingly, so that.
I was just talking about the amount.
With each.
I'm just talking about, about the amount.
Right.
That a varsity sailing coach is at whatever tier he's at.
That's right, so. Right, so, so once it, once it goes into the collective bargaining contract, it would incorporate as, you know, instead of having these many, you have two more and you would have to let the, the seat, the, the union decide how it's divvied up. So as it is now, if it's, if it's freestanding, then it's paid through the boosters or through a stipended position elsewhere, then it gets incorporated into the contract after the new contract's signed.
But the, should the rate be reflective of the appendix, the stipend?
I, I don't think it necessarily has to be, it's not been contracted, it hasn't been signed in the contract.
No, but it's good practice and.
It's entirely, entirely up to the, you know, when they're funding it, I mean, they don't have the money for a sailing instructor, then what do you do?
Um, hey, we decided that Paul and I are going to represent the school board, yes, okay, just want to factor them in, I can.
Do you want?
Yeah, that's fine, it's no problem, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, alright, is there, is there any further action that we need to take on this?
No, I'll just bring that date back and see what they say and if that does not work for them, I will come back to you with your dates. Next thing on your table, I know you, I think you, Jennifer, did you put that in online packet? You just didn't, we didn't mail it, as you can see, it's a little shady. So, this is all the information that has come thus far from the South Shore Collaborative.
Right.
And so we've given that to you and particularly in the, the top piece here, we get this out.
Uh, we can't, we, we just got it, so we couldn't meet it before we got here, because I don't just speak.
Did it just come?
Oh, no, no, I read some of it online.
Right. This is the hard topic for you to have.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
It was heavy, it's the same thing that you got online.
Yeah, 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 I read.
So on the, the preamble part, you'll notice part of what is new with the collaborative, and we did this last year, is that once a year, the committee has to vote, just for me to sit on the collaborative board. So we have to do that, we're a little bit late because of the timing of our meeting.
It says May fifteen.
Right, and, and Hank Perrin, who runs the collaborative, knows that we're behind because of the order of how things fell with the, the change in terms of the town meeting and everything, so he was aware of that and we're not the last district to do a vote either, just so you know. Uh, this year, I sat as the vice chair of the collaborative on the board, this coming year, I'll be sitting as the chair on the board. But it still requires a formal vote from the committee for me to do that, so.
So we need a motion to.
You need a motion and you need to take a vote and then I have to deliver that information back to Hank Perrin at the collaborative.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Mrs. Cataldo as the representative to the South Shore Collaborative.
I'll second that, I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so you are duly noted as the chair of the South Shore Collaborative.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then that, the rest of this is all for your reading pleasure, if you're having trouble speaking, I have another report that just came in that I'll have you at the next meeting, I have to go over. We've had our last meeting of the year, though, we won't be meeting again until the spring, I mean, the fall. Uh, I also have in your packet, uh, school committee meeting dates for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. After this next meeting on June twenty-fifth, you do not have another meeting scheduled until August sixth, however. Uh, Mr. DeGeneres and I are talking because in his section he'll be talking about the lease for the buses and we're a little concerned if we wait till August sixth, all voting that has to take place might be a wee bit too late and so we're hoping to schedule something in July.
It could be just a one item.
Yes.
Agenda.
Okay.
Just to, just to vote on the vendor for the bus leases.
Great.
And it, because it is such a, it's for one item, it might even be that you don't necessarily have to commit to a Wednesday evening, it could be another night of the week if that works better for all of you and we're all together, because I know everybody begins their vacation shortly.
Right, so we need a, a motion to, you don't want to talk about the date now, the July date, do you?
Well.
Oh, you do, okay.
You're all here, I don't want to think about it.
Let's do it.
I could do any day, any Wednesday night except the last July, because I'll, I'll be out, uh, I won't be around.
So I, you said any Wednesday but the last one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably not good for people to do July fourth, not July second, that's fine, correct? So the ninth is sixteenth of the twenty-third. What's better for us?
Sometime this week, because we have to evaluate the bids and come back on the twenty-third.
So you're looking for somewhere in the week of July twenty-first?
Excellent, yeah.
So July twenty-third, because anything earlier is going to be too early.
I think, I think I'm out of town that, that week personally.
When did the bids come back, Dan, I'm sorry?
Well, the bids come back July, uh, June twenty-fifth, but we need time to evaluate them, I'm not sure how long that'll take us, but.
The sixteenth wouldn't be enough?
Yeah.
I'm not here the sixteenth, I'm in the Cape with those superintendents.
Oh, we're not, um.
It doesn't matter what day of the week, right?
Right.
Well, I just can't do Tuesdays.
Okay, so no Tuesdays, you know, I want to bring a pretty good day, it's better.
Are you, Ms. Darnaby, are you out the entire week of the twenty-first?
I think so, but I'm going to try to find out before we leave.
Okay.
Call away.
Exactly. So maybe, can we come back to that, the, the slide?
Yes.
Or we could just pick another date besides the week of the twenty-first.
What if we went to the end of the week prior, if we did say July seventeen?
Yeah, I could do that.
Which is Thursday, you know, I'm not available then, okay.
I'm not, I'm not there. What about the fourteenth, I might do the fourteenth.
I'm not sure, I know I'm getting, I'm setting up all day that day.
I would be doing the twenty-first, you know, the twenty-first.
No, I don't think it's, it's not being.
Oh, okay.
So find out.
Okay, I'll, we'll find out and we'll, maybe even before we go, but so.
Um, and then the other choices, I know evenings tend to be what's traditional, but is it easier for folks to do a morning meeting?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that's work wise.
I'm just putting anything out to help everybody.
Yeah, that's fun.
If it's a one agenda and we're talking about half an hour, maybe go with the leases? Okay, or there are your recommendations.
I could do it on Monday and a Friday, but I can't do it Tuesday, right?
Okay.
And Jean can definitely.
I could do late afternoon, I cannot do first thing in the morning.
Okay, well, that's why I'm just, I'm trying to think, in the summer, people's schedules are different.
No, unfortunately.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll come back to the July date, but should we vote on the rest of the dates here?
You can vote on this and then you can even, if you want, look at your calendars and the next meeting, come back and with dates that are available and decide what would be the added date and add it to the calendar.
Okay.
And take a vote then.
Yeah, I think Labor Day is the first this year.
It's early.
Yeah.
So if Labor Day, um, is the first, we're in school on the second, right?
Yes.
Uh, uh, yeah, okay, I get it.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the schedule of school committee meetings for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen calendar year?
My only concern is the MAS C, MAS S, um, conference begins on a night that we have a school committee scheduled and that actually happened this past year.
Is that November?
It's, it's, yeah, November fifth. They just, at, at least this year, there was just one, I don't think there was much going on that first day.
The first day, yeah, oh, okay, no, not the first night.
No, I think it was the, I think it was the prior, like, the pri, the night prior to the next day's fully loaded day, I don't think there was much going on.
All right, I can't remember.
Because we.
Yeah, there's not that.
So we came back.
No, I know you came back, but, you know, I would hate to have people come back and then go back down again, that's.
We just did.
I like everything.
What was the July date that we were suggesting again?
The twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
I don't think we really decide on anything, we looked at the twenty-third, I think was one of the recommended times.
Okay.
Fourteenth was one.
It turns out I am out from the nineteenth to the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so that answers that.
Um, I, uh, I, on the schedule, um, are we talking about the schedule?
Yes.
Do you?
Uh, meeting on the seventeenth, yeah, David, it is, um, I prefer for us to meet on the tenth, because.
Are you still talking September, September?
December, December, that's the, I, I mean, I won't be able to go to the third, because I'll be in Ireland. The seventeenth, I'm going to be, um, near Antarctica, so I prefer to meet on the tenth, because it's the end of the year and I like to be there for our last meeting of the year, if possible. So I, I would propose meeting on the tenth, if possible.
So two weeks in a row.
Yeah, just for that one time for me.
So you're saying it's December third and December tenth?
Yes, just for that, that's the only date I would change, if that's okay with everybody.
Does that work with everybody else?
So which day you can't think of, the third?
Um, the seventeenth, I, because I, I won't even be in communication, I mean, literally, I'll be off the planet pretty much.
So you're on the third, the third and the tenth?
Yeah, I mean, in Ireland, if there's something really crucial that comes up, I could be in contact with you, but I, I'm going to be like only a couple hours away from Antarctica, so. I'm going to be in K four, actually, communications with you are going to be hard.
Okay, okay, so the.
The tenth is, so.
We'll move the December seventeenth to December tenth.
Yeah.
All the others are fine.
If all the others are good, why don't we, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't have my schedule mapped far in advance, but I can tell you up until, uh, October fifteenth, it's fine, the rest I can juggle.
Okay.
Cool.
Everybody else good?
Yeah.
So why don't we make a motion to adopt this?
Uh, we'll, that we accept the schedule of school committee meetings two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, with the correction on the December tenth, as, uh, as stated.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
And Chairman, uh, you just know I won't be at the third, but I, but I could communicate, it's only six hours by phone, so I, I.
Please fly back.
Yeah, I can, so, I, I could, uh, Skype or do something if they were really in a crisis situation.
Okay, thank you, good, alright, so these dates are approved, uh, as shown here with the tenth substituted for the seventeenth of December. Next is the school committee retreat for fall discussion.
Yes, so one of the things that we did my first year here, we had a retreat with the MAS C. We didn't have one this whole past year and I think it's probably good if we have another one coming up this year to talk about goals and other things, you know, with all.
Do we have to have it here?
We would do like it.
Do we have to have it here because it's a public meeting?
You have to post it, it has to be someplace that's available, so you couldn't say have it in New Hampshire.
Oh, we could have it in Cohasset.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I propose we have it upstairs, we have, you know, like, it's a big space, you know, upstairs is the lead weapon.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's really big.
Oh, at your house?
Yeah, space.
I, I heard what you were saying.
Do you want the studio audience to come to your house?
Well, does it have to be, um, audio, video?
No, but, no, but if it's a posted meeting, anyone could come.
No.
Oh, they could come. Everybody comes to our house.
Yeah, it's, it's, it just has to be posted, it's a public meeting, but I.
Yeah, oh, I don't mind if people come.
I did want to ask and then.
I'll leave the door open.
Totally, that's not a problem.
And then the other question is, and I would appreciate between this meeting and the next meeting, if you could come back with possible dates that would work for you, whether you'd want something in August, whether you'd want something in September, you'd want something in October. I think probably September would be best and would you want it on a weeknight, do you want it on a Friday night? I know the last one, we had a Friday night, I think, and I brought dinner, um.
I just wouldn't want it from the first to the tenth of September, because I won't be here.
That would be a problem.
But any other date would be fine.
Okay.
I would propose a weekday.
We can't have it on John Smith landing date, that's not.
I know a lot of committees will commit a Saturday, I'm not asking everybody, if that's what works for you, then that's fine, but, you know.
September twentieth is possible.
I can't do enough, I cannot do the weekend of the twelfth, it would be fourteen.
What about Rosh Hashanah?
Rosh Hashanah is during.
What about Wednesday, the tenth or twenty-fourth? Because I don't, I can't really, uh, the weekends are tough, because I'll go either way or.
Wednesdays and twenty-fourth is Rosh Hashanah. The tenth of, of the twenty-fourth of September.
Busy.
Oh, the twenty-fourth, yeah, that's Rosh Hashanah, that's a big holiday.
That twenty-fourth is September, how about the tenth?
The tenth of what, what?
September.
I'm going to be coming, I'm going to be out.
She's away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're going to be away.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were away in December.
Then two.
You're away twice.
Oh, okay, okay, terrible, got the trouble. So, uh, how about the Thursday or?
Are we doing this Saturday or are we doing during the week?
That's up to the committee.
I, it would be very difficult for me to do a weekend.
Okay, sure, like a Friday afternoon?
We can do, yeah, Friday afternoon is okay, or Thursday.
What's better for you?
Personally, I, I could do Friday afternoon.
Jean, what's better for you?
Can't do mornings.
Okay, so.
You can be done by one time.
I could, I could leave at three thirty or four, maybe.
How about a Friday afternoon, like the nineteenth of September?
For how long?
I can't do that, I'm, it's a parents' weekend at college, I can't do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no idea when parents' weekend is, I'm scratching.
Okay, how about the twelfth of September?
It's usually the last weekend.
The twelfth of September, September?
Um, I don't recall the weekend.
Okay, so Friday's not good.
How about Thursday, uh?
How about, um, one night?
Friday the twenty-sixth?
That's still holiday, unfortunately.
Are we talking September or August now?
September.
September.
Well, if I could get online in this room, I could check when parents' weekend is, but I don't seem to have the code anymore.
I can get online. What is, uh, what do you, what's your, what school, what does it?
Parents twenty-six after three, I mean, it's supposed to wait to sundown, but it, it's the second day of Rosh Hashanah.
Might almost be dark then.
What?
Might almost be dark.
Yeah, the second day of Rosh Hashanah, I think.
We'll pull a shade.
Yeah, yeah, totally, so I, I, Eddie's in heaven, he won't give a f- hassle, so the second day of Rosh Hashanah, the twenty-first.
Oh, dear, September twenty-seven, six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, sorry.
What? What, what did you say?
It's family weekend.
Twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Why don't we do this, because I, I know this won't defy any open meeting laws, if all of you before the next meeting, send me available dates in September, I will gather them and find a common date and bring it back to you.
Well, I think we could just do it here, it's going to be really hard to do it.
Well, let's cut another two minutes on this and then we'll move on.
Do, oh, we said the twelfth is out? Uh, September twelfth is mine.
The twelfth is, is out for me.
How about, um, the eleventh?
Talking to the eleventh of the evening?
Yeah, how about the eleventh? Because we should probably do it if we're going to do it, do it in the fall.
It's more in the beginning of the year, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm coming back on the tenth, but big deal.
September eleventh, not a, not a great day to have activity.
It's pain, sleep on the table. Oh, right, that's true.
It's my son's birthday, sorry, no.
Oh, no, he'll be at school.
Oh. Okay, how about the seventeenth then, if you don't wanna do it in September one?
No, he, he's gonna be in college, so he won't be, he won't be home.
Oh, oh, so, but are you freezing about September eleventh?
No.
He better be in college, he better be.
No.
I'll just have a moment of silence to start the meeting.
Okay.
September eleventh, at four, at, uh, four o'clock?
Four?
I will call and ask. Hopefully they'll say yes.
If we're already booked after.
At what time?
Uh, four, four o'clock?
Uh, later?
Later, five o'clock?
Um, six, six?
Six o'clock.
Six, fine.
Is that working that day?
So do you wanna do it at my house?
Whatever you like.
Whatever.
If you don't mind the public showing up.
No, I don't care, I'll, I'll just come to Ireland, I'll be really happy for her. God knows what the house would be like with David here for a week.
Okay, so we're gonna adopt the, the dates, as lo- as well as September eleventh at six P M. For the retreat meeting. Okay?
And how many hours is it gonna be?
Twelve.
What?
Bring your sleeping bag and snacks.
No, how many hours is it gonna be?
Uh, I'm sure if you're starting at six, I wouldn't go beyond three, I think by nine o'clock, if you've, you've worked all day, you might be tired.
And I'll get snacks.
Okay.
Healthy snacks.
Healthy snacks.
I'll be hungry, so.
Healthy snacks.
Alright, so we need a motion to vote these and move on to the next agenda?
Make a motion to accept the, um, oh, we just, we already accepted the.
We do the calendar and the dates, you don't have to.
Yeah, we don't have to do the.
Not for that, I just take it away.
Okay, good, alright, next item?
The next item moves to finance.
Warrant fourteen twenty-two S.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant fourteen twenty-two S.
Second. All in favor, roll call load.
I, Mary McGolter.
I, Paul Schubert.
I, Gina Stina.
I, Helene Lee.
I, Paul Nibini. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and finally, the school bus lease bid approval.
They feel like you've been penalized. Okay, we have taken, you know, been making comments behind her.
We're like this.
You know they drive the A M bus, right, the A M bus, it gets.
Beat the street in here.
I don't know.
So, uh, so we have some guests to present?
So.
Well, maybe, I think they have questions or comments, I mean, does the committee have any comments or questions on what was in the packet?
No.
Or just answer questions?
I have some questions.
So we're.
You know I have questions, I always have questions.
We're planning to be seven school buses, new, uh, three-year lease, uh, the seventy-seven passenger flat nose style. The bid will be due Wednesday through twenty fifth, that's when we'll have the opening. Um, the, the bid includes, uh, our specifications, so what were, what type of bus, bus specifications were those for?
Yes, yes, yes. I like the white top on the new ones.
That's an extra charge.
Um, superintendent, can we have the statute here, because if I'm stuck in Ireland, that could be a problem. Okay, so I probably is too ambitious to have it in my house, I'm just talking about tomorrow.
Not a problem.
I have a question, uh, maybe there are a lot of other questions for the, for the folks that are here, um, well, one thing is, I didn't notice, but I, I maybe just missed it. Are we also requiring that, and, well, okay, actually, now I see it, I just missed it, sure, never mind. I was wondering about the maintenance and if it's gonna, if they're gonna be required to come to the site to, and provide a replacement bus, but.
So we're requesting a three-year bumper-to-bumper maintenance agreement, I mean, a, a warranty. And then the, the preventative maintenance, we would be doing ourselves.
Okay.
Okay.
And they're, they're, they're supposed to list the, what the preventative maintenance is.
And will they provide a replacement bus if one is out of service being repaired?
If the, if the bus is under warranty, the three-year warranty, they'll re- provide a bus if it's out, I think, ten days or more.
Oh, and what will we do in the other, in the interim, just use one of the other buses?
Use one of our extra buses, yeah.
Okay.
Do you see any problem with this?
Uh, no, I mean.
I mean, I read it, I, it's hard.
I mean, I don't know, maybe there may be comments from the, the public, you know.
Questions, please.
I mean, there may be things that we haven't looked at, I, you know, I've, you, we used, um, a couple of local schools' bids to, to, you know, use that as a guide. Our town attorney has looked at it and given us suggestions and so forth, no leads, no cheats.
I know there was a lot of discussion at the capital, uh, committee group, but is it possible to get, uh, kind of a summary, just for the record, to put into our own packages? Where we can look at the cost analysis, you know, essentially what was presented already approved.
You don't know what cost is?
Well, the estimated cost analysis from.
Oh, when we decided to lease, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that information, that's, that's the information you.
That'd be great, do you guys wanna talk about it now, or just to see it later when it, I mean, we.
Well, I think everyone has seen it several times, but I don't have to apply another copy of it, I don't, I do not have it with me, I just came with it, so I received.
But I, I believe the committee already decided to go with the lease.
Yes, I was just asking for the record to put in with.
Oh.
Oh, wow, for, for, yeah, yeah.
I have just a question about the wording, and it's same wording on the inside here and this wording here. It says exactly the same thing, the Cohasset School Department will be responsible for routine maintenance repair. Provided, however, that the successful bidder will provide adequate assurances of the existence of facilities slash personnel to perform warranty repairs on the vehicles that are located within one hundred fifty miles of Cohasset. Can you explain what that means?
Well, we're, we're asking them to have a facility for warranty repairs.
Just warranty repairs?
Yeah, just warranty.
Because it's not clear in this wording.
Not, not routine, because we'll, we, we will be responsible for routine repairs. They will be responsible for warranty repairs, and we want the, someplace within a hundred fifty mile range to be able to have those warranties repaired.
Okay. Alright. Okay, alright. Because that's repeated in a couple of places and then.
And doesn't bumper-to-bumper imply that it's comprehensive?
Warranty.
Yeah.
So is there anything that would fall out?
No preventative maintenance. Yeah, there's a lot of things that fall out of that.
Yeah?
Totally.
Yeah?
There are a lot of things that aren't.
I'm just comparing it to the car, a car lease, where, you know, a bumper, bumper car lease, and it covers every maintenance, but not the same.
Apples and oranges.
We're not sure what that bumper-to-bumper warranty.
We need to see the warranty, we need to see what it looks like.
We have to see what it looks like.
Okay.
Yeah.
If bumper-to-bumper has implication, and I think of it the way that you do, but, you know, certainly it doesn't cover oil changes and filters and, you know, that's, that's maintenance.
Mike Pauls, okay?
Mike Pauls, I may not cover Mike Pauls.
Does it cut, it cut a breaks, brakes, tires?
So. Yeah, it's not covered rip seats, I mean, but we really, we have to see what they, what they provide us and compare from one end to another to see if there's a better.
Right, I mean, and if a ri- if a seat is ripped, then that's on us.
That's on us.
But that's not covered under the warranty.
Inevitably, that will happen because.
Absolutely, it happens all the time.
It happens all the time.
I have no idea how that happens, but.
And, yeah, Dave, do you have a copy of this in front of you?
Yeah.
Can you look at page twenty-nine? Under default remedies, section C, I think it's just a minor typo. The, all of the buses are lost, stolen, damaged, beyond repair, destroyed, and comfortably beaten upon, confiscated, condemned, seized, or attached. So, should that word the be if all of the buses are lost?
Have be if, you know, you know, this is a problem.
No, I don't think so.
What page is that?
No, I think all of the buses is probably inclusive term for all of these buses.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
Right.
No, the word the at the beginning of the sentence.
I understand, but all of the buses, I presume includes all of these buses, and when you say the, all of us, meaning that's an inclusive term for all of the leased vehicles ever.
I think it's the way the lease agreement is, is worded.
Really? That's not, that's the all of the buses, the all of the buses are lost, stolen.
This actually, this. This piece actually came from the attorney, I mean, I could ask the question.
Can you please ask that question, because it's a little funky.
I think it's a legal term to define the entire fleet that's being leased, if it's, you don't wanna put in how many numbers are in there. And you say all the buses, it's probably been defined earlier in the lease agreement of what number are involved or was inclusive.
Um, I just have a question, David, can you get bids back, and because they're, what they consider their regular maintenance and their bumper-to-bumper varies from company to company. Do we have the freedom to go back and make sure we're comparing apples to apples, how does that work?
Well, we, we wanna be able to compare apples to apples, so.
Right, but they may not give us.
Right.
Something that we.
Well, we have to look at overall, which, which would be the best way to go.
Okay.
Um, and that was another suggestion that we were gonna make, that we.
Marty has his hand up.
Yeah, Dave needs to. Go, Marty, go.
All of the different manufacturers that put the parts in the bus have their own limited warranty that piles all together.
Okay.
So sometimes the manufacturers will defer to the manufacturer of the component.
Alright.
So, and they can be limited, so it is reading fine print.
Okay.
And I had a question the day where I hadn't seen this contract yet, and you have specs, you know, if these specs are not correct. Do we get to adjust these?
Well, we can adjust them before it goes out, I thought, I know Kelly has, Kelly had looked down with me, they're, they're from the two thousand fourteen.
I haven't officially seen this, nobody's handed me one, and I should probably go over it.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll send you one to.
Thank you. So if they vote on it, and I find something.
But we're not voting on anything, well, we all vote, we work.
Well, we are gonna vote, yes, yeah. We should still vote, because otherwise I'm ragged on it, because we need to get these things ordered and put all of them. Well, that's why we're asking them to vote. So can you put an end to this or something?
Yeah, we'll hold this on our computer.
We can ask the police.
Okay, so, uh, Brian?
Before you vote, I just have a few questions, I wanna let the committee run its course, but I just asked.
Oh, I'm sorry, gotta give your, uh, name and, uh, location.
Sure, Brian Hoss, fifteen Sheldon Road, and I just had a few questions about the, the contract, or perhaps observations.
Uh, there were three or four points that, that jumped out at me, these are the, the analysis that we had done that led us to the conclusion that this may be the right way to go. The first is that this contract specifies unlimited mileage, and I believe that, you know, we, we say that we, that there's an estimate that we would drive the bus fourteen thousand miles per year, but that there would be no mileage charge, was the way that I read the contract.
Right, correct, yeah.
So, to me, that says we think we're gonna drive fourteen K, but really it's an unlimited mileage lease. And I think that a leasing company will look at that and price it for the worst-case scenario. And I think that you may end up with a very different price than the preliminary quote that you got, which assumed a fifteen thousand hard stop, and then moved to a penalty above that level.
Right, right.
So, I, I think this is, this is a nice-to-have, the unlimited mileage concept, but I think that you may get a quote that prices dearly for it. And I don't think we necessarily need it, I mean, we did, I mean, certainly.
So we should, are you suggesting we put a limit there, the fifteen thousand?
I, you know, I, the analysis we had done was based on the fifteen thousand, both of the mileage of the buses over their life, and I think we got comfortable that we were running consistently below fifteen thousand.
Right, it was, yeah.
And certainly, we knew there was a hard cap at fifteen, and we could make sure we rotated buses for the, you know, away games, so that we didn't pile them on any one particular vehicle, so.
Yeah.
I, I, unless, you, Jack, I, I, I think you're gonna get a better price.
We get a better price if.
I would think you'd get a better price if you have the hard cap in there.
Can you, can you say up to twenty thousand miles, for example, or do you think that that would still restrict it?
I, I think whatever the number, the, the lower the number, the lower the price on the lease, that's it.
Yeah.
So, you, you wanna set at a level that you're comfortable, you can stay below that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, any number, any additional padding in there, you're just paying for flexibility that you are currently don't need.
Yeah, you may not use.
Yeah.
What would the mileage on that?
I, I just, I don't know what the dealer's break points are, but, you know, we were, we were comfortable with fifteen and I.
It was like fifteen, isn't it?
And that's how we did price it out originally.
And that's how you priced it, so if you go up with an unlimited mileage RFP, you're gonna get a different price.
Yeah.
What page was the mileage on?
It's, it's everywhere.
Okay.
It's in at least three different places in this contract.
Okay.
You could fix fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, where on page?
You pay a penalty, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see.
But you do have the freedom to rotate your buses, so you're not.
We do, yeah, right, we do.
Because like you said, you can rotate them up.
So we can get eliminated, no mileage charges will be paid?
Plus routes that would change within a year.
No, I think.
We would just say the up, uh, fifteen thousand. No mileage charge, uh, up to fifteen thousand.
Well, this says fourteen thousand.
This says fourteen, but we can make this, just to cover us a little.
No, Brian, would you, would you suggest that, um, you know, it seems to me that it would make sense to either say, obviously define the penalty price for miles over fifteen thousand. But you could always ask for an alternate for an unlimited lease, while you're out for bid, you could then get, you could understand for fifteen thousand.
You could ask the price of both ways.
Right, and for fifteen thousand, it's X, which is additional penalty per mile of this, and then an unlimited lease would be Y. You could get the best of both, and then really quantify the delta between fifteen thousand and unlimited.
I, I, it's a very reasonable approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't think that would muddy the waters of the future?
Think so?
No.
I think they can handle that.
Yeah.
It's just one variable.
Yeah, they're just gonna change the two residual values.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one variable, if we start having like about a lot of different variables, that would be a problem, but mileage is the biggest variable. When you rent a car, that's often the biggest variable, right?
You just gotta make sure we change it at every place.
It is.
We have to change it, right, exactly.
Right. So we just have to go for it.
We'll probably do, do a word search.
So we should go to fifteen thousand instead of fourteen.
Great, words are the one.
We also check the price.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the team that actually drives the buses.
Okay, what do you think, fifteen thousand, is that a good, fifteen? That's better than fourteen.
Fifteen, yes, that's more, it's fine.
Yeah, I like, I always like the number five better.
What, four is a power.
When, when we looked at the total mileage on the buses divided by their age, we got anywhere from sort of twelve to fourteen, they were all under fifteen, so.
Correct, so if we're, uh, we're edging up to fourteen, then we might as well do fifteen.
Just do fifteen for a little bit.
Right, so we have some questions, yeah, in case we win the state tournament and, you know.
So that's the first suggestion.
In the sun.
What was that, that, we incorporate that?
I know, but who, who knows, maybe win it and like, or that day.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna change it to fifteen, fifteen, up to fifteen.
Yes, up to fifteen.
Okay.
Right, so we have a hundred thousand, we have a thousand.
Okay, I think Brian has the floor right now, so let's give Mr. Hoss the opportunity to speak.
The, the second suggestion, um, is with regards to the purchase option, um, conceptually it's fine, and, and it, it's not even really hurt ball, because it's at market value. You're just saying, hey, we'll have a, we have the right, right to have a conversation and either agree or not agree on price, that's what this says, it's not a fixed price purchase option. I, I'm a little bit concerned that this might, um, this might trigger the tax code in a way that the leasing company can no longer take the depreciation for tax purposes on the bus.
Right.
Which would have a profound impact on the pricing you get back.
Right.
Um, I don't know that to be a fact, but I, you know, when I was doing the research on this, I did my best to read some tax code on whether or not the buses were depreciable. It looked like they were, and there was mention of, you know, purchase options being sort of a tripwire that breaks the treatment, so.
No, you're, you're, I, I think you're absolutely right.
The existence of this purchase option in the contract, you know, could take, I don't know, somewhere around five thousand dollars of, of savings per year away from the leasing company.
Right.
And they will pass that on.
They'll pass it on.
They'll, they'll pass that payment on to you, so.
Question, would they be interested in us purchasing possibly anyway?
Always.
So if they're interested in us purchasing, let's not put it in.
You have an option to purchase the bus.
So we don't have to put it in there, and then at the end of the three years, because I know we talked about maybe purchasing.
Sure.
You know, when the time came, it's like, oh, I'm purchasing them all.
I mean, or Kurt will sell you a car if you want it, I mean.
Yeah, so I would take it out.
They'll have, they'll sell you the bus at the end of three years.
And then the.
Yeah, so take that off then.
Yeah.
That would be my suggestion, because I, I, I do think it, I do think it breaks the tax depreciation for them, which.
And, and one quick thing, I think, if they're gonna sell it, they would incorporate the cost of the sale at the end of the lease, regardless of what the tax implication is. After they've settled their tax bill, having the lease depreciation according to them. So in other words, like, if you put it in, you're right, it's gonna follow up the, the tax code, they're, you're right, they may wanna buy it or sell it anyway, so.
They'll either lease it to someone else at the end of three years, or they'll sell it to you.
And they'll just change, they'll just change the price of the, the sale at the end of the lease.
Yeah, or otherwise they'll end up in Costa Rica with a, a Holbrook bus or whatever. It was one of those.
Yeah. So, so that's suggestion number two. Suggestion number three actually was a similar one that Paul picked up on, which is, you know, they're, they're providing pickup and drop off for your buses if they require warranty service, but it would be great if, you know, they were willing to loan us one of the buses on their used car lot during that period, um, so that we're not dependent on, you know, third-party plusing service, which may or may not have buses available when we need them during that whatever few-day period. It's something that could be important to us that might not cost them a lot.
My question is, so we are both responsible for insuring and registering these, these buses ourselves if that type of arrangement is set up?
Well, it would have to be ready-
And they brought us a substitute.
It would have to be ready to go. It'd have to already be passed in inspection and-
Yeah, but what about our insurance? I mean-
There's usually an accommodation in your insurance to allow for a rental vehi- temporary vehicle, but obviously you'd have to make sure.
I'd have to make sure of it.
Yeah. I, I, I don't know. I don't know how, you know, car dealers do it when, you know, you take your car for service and then hand you a piece for a loaner, right?
Well, you sign your life away on that little piece of paper before you leave.
Hand your credit card over first. I've never had to do that.
But there's a special endorsement that you can usually get on your own insurance that allows for that.
This, this, this is a nice to have, I mean, if it functionally doesn't work so yet, but if it did-
But would that raise the price of-
Well, make an alternate again.
Of the lease, knowing that they have to give us another bus if they-
It, it probably would. Maybe it's just something that we inquire about after we get the bids back to see if, you know, they throw it in as a way to close the deal. I, I'm just thinking out loud, but-
I don't think it should make a big difference, because I really don't, because they're responsible for the warranty repairs. This is only when we're having warranty repairs.
Right.
So I don't think it will make a big difference. They're just gonna be, um, under the gun to get the warranty repairs done as quickly as possible. And I think that's a good, uh, stimulus for them.
Well, but to be fair, right, it's, it's something extra. They're gonna, they have the potential to charge extra.
Right.
So I, I would think that they're going to charge something for it, because even if it's two hundred dollars per bus per year, that they have to think that you're gonna need it.
How many people, how many places lease seven buses at a time?
There's huge, there's, there's only a few companies that do this in the region of-
Well, first let me back up. How important would it be for us to have, like, if we had a loaner? I mean, we lose a bus for, for the week.
Right now, we'd be in a broken car.
If you lost one bus.
We'd have to use, we'd have to use- We'd have to use a contract service, like, we have to use a-
And not fly it. We'd have to use a contract service.
And one, one bus rental for one event could be as much as six hundred dollars.
Right, so you, so you think about it from their perspective. If they think the bus will be out for ten days, and each bus will be out once in, in every year or two, you know, you're talking about, you know, seventy, a hundred days, six hundred dollars a day that they're gonna have to build in potentially. But why don't you just ask for it as an, at all, you know?
No, 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 six hundred, that's the worst-case scenario.
Right, I guess just thinking out loud, and, and Paul, we both came to this idea, but thinking out loud, I mean, if they had to give us a bus for ten days, just to protect us from the possibility that we might use it for one of those days, you know, they're gonna build into their pricing or use of the bus for ten. Maybe it's just cheaper if we go rent the bus for six hundred for one of it for the one day and just not complicate the-
Because we may not need it for all ten days, right?
Well, what do other towns do with this? Do we know?
Well, they have extra buses.
Jalen's thinking they have extra buses sitting around.
They have extra buses.
So other towns wouldn't put that in the bid?
No. Well, I haven't, I haven't seen that.
You haven't?
But that doesn't mean that they don't-
Have you looked at other bids?
Yeah, well, this is based on a couple of other bids.
Oh, so it wasn't in the-
No.
Would it make sense, again, to, instead of negotiating against ourselves, to just ask it as an alternate, um, you know, what would the price be if you added this, this feature?
It's a good idea. Ask what it would cost on the margin incrementally as an option, and they may say, we'll throw it in for free.
Okay. So we only have one thing?
Or they did not.
Because they're getting seven.
Well, then how do we, how would we, um, how would we evaluate? Would we put that in as part of the evaluation at the bottom, the total cost? You know, you're, you're kinda muddying the waters now by putting something like that in, because we're trying to evaluate on total, total cost.
Well, I think it's apples to apples, I think it's apples to apples for the buses without this loaner program, and then we'd also like to know if you offer a loaner program and how much it would cost incrementally. And they, somebody may say, you know, give you a really good deal on that, and it, it, it moves the needle for us.
We could have a couple of variables. When I used to have to compare mortgage rates, Eddie had me compare mortgage rates with ten different banks. So you had the APR, you had weather points, whatever, so you have a couple of variables, as long as we don't have ten. So we have one variable that has to do with mileage, right?
But you may have one company say, I'm not gonna give you a loaner and have the lowest price.
I think you got rid of your mileage variable.
And then another company that bids on the loan, that gives us a loan with the price, so how would you evaluate that? You're not evaluating apples to apples.
Oh, we did? Okay, so this is-
Which actually gives you a little flexibility, I would think.
Yeah, but you're trying to tell them, you're gonna evaluate, like, this is telling them, we're evaluating on the lowest total price, right?
For a comparable offering. So if someone says-
You compare the prices without apples to apples.
No, but if you, I'm saying if one of them says we're not doing a loaner, then how do you compare that with something?
Then you only compare the price in the loan, in the no loaner column.
Correct. I think Marty has a concept.
Right, so the, the base bid is without the loaners, and that's the apples to apples that you're gonna compare. So we also like to know, will you throw in a loaner, and if so, how much incrementally on top of that? So you can compare apples to apples.
Not saying that we're gonna use that.
We may or may not use it. We'd like to know if the option exists and what it would cost.
And there's two answers to that. One, the, uh, that the, whether the option exists or not, you have to think like a computer man, David. And then the third is if you go into the sub-call, um, of the options that, if it does exist, then what the price would be. So it's a yes or no, and then you go into the yes, and the yes has multiple answers depending upon the money.
I think, Marty, do you have?
There's actually a third option.
Oh, okay.
Oh, geez.
That was a third option, I thought.
Oh, no, it's a better one. Uh, with me on staff, um, I can do the warranty here, and they pay us for my time. They pay the money back directly to the school, and they ship the part, and we don't lose the bus, which is what we've done in the past. So we never lose a bus. And that is planning and coordination. Now, I've, I've done this for a billion years. Some major components do fail, and they have, you know, problems that can't be resolved right away. That's the one you're worrying about with, with the loaner. But those are rare. But they do happen, but they're rare. The smaller things that we're gonna push back the warranty, we may be able to handle here. And not lose the bus. And that's what we, again, that's what we've done in the past.
And you get paid by the, um, company?
Bluebird, the manufacturer-
Will pay?
Will pay a set price per hour and give us the part and say, here's what we'll pay.
Do you have to be an approved warranty specialist, though?
No, you have to be really good, that's what I already, I've already done it, and, and they've already, they've already okayed it.
Would the leasing, I guess the question is, would the leasing company agree with that?
You gotta make sure it doesn't void the lease.
The engineering manufacturer, but the bus manufacturer will want it. The bus manufacturer.
So are you saying, put that in the bid, that we would use our local contractor to, to repair all warranty items?
They'll, no, they'll throw it out there, but, but that's a, because it is a huge deal to drive a bus back and forth, fuel and time and drivers back to dealership. That's why they don't fly planes back and forth.
So it's, is, is it fair to say that that might be a, a second set of discussions after we get answers back? Because you're gonna, we're gonna get prices for, uh, the base, with the mileage, with, with, with the, right?
Right. How we do the warranty.
It is a third. It's a third component.
Right. Because then we could really evaluate, and if you say that the warranty work is gonna cost us X dollars more per bus.
Use a local-
Then Marty's an option.
Right.
It becomes an option if they wanna do that. But I think you get the price, you know, for the bus or the warranty, how we do the warranty.
They wanna pay, they wanna pay and do it.
And that would be a next step, type thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're gonna keep the loaner out, it's just a separate question.
Correct. And I don't think we have to decide about the Marty, uh, what Marty brought up right now, anyway.
Let the leasing company decide who the one-
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
When you say leave it out, though, what do you mean? Leave it as an alternate?
It's, it's an alternate. It's not part of the base price. It's not a, it's not a requisite that they provide the loaner, but-
Right.
In fact, they bid everything without the loaners, but we wanna know if you have loaners, and if so, we'll do that.
And we don't have to ask them a question, will you use Marty? That's not part of the bid.
Well, that's, that's a different matter.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then the, um, the last item, the fourth item, was the contract says that when we return the buses at the end of three years, we'll have better than fifty percent left on the tires and the brakes. And I, I seek Marty's counsel on this, but I, I'm pretty sure when we sort of through this, the thought was, you know, we could run them for three years and not replace tires and brakes, you know, at forty-five thousand, we'd be getting close, but we would have to do tires and brakes during that period. We wouldn't have fifty percent left at year three, right?
Sometimes you do. You really do. It depends on the tire manufacturer, the height of the rubber, the stuff in the road. So sometimes they, they generally say that that's after the free, I think that's what most places come back. So that's why they go down there, that's why that figures.
Yeah, I guess my question is, how does that figure come in here? Because when I read that, I felt like, okay, we just set ourselves on the hook to put new tires and brakes on these buses the day we send them back.
Right.
You know, so that they can then lease them to some third party with new tires and brakes that we paid for. I mean, I, I, I mean, if, if, if there's a fifteen thousand mile limit in the lease, they know what the tires and brakes are gonna look like. So my feeling is, we should just take that out. It's normal wear and tire commensurate with the mileage.
That's a great point. I mean, imagine that would be a, how much is, set brakes?
A few thousand bucks times seven buses, I mean, it's, it's real money.
A huge hit, yeah.
And it's, it's real money that we don't even get to enjoy. It's money we're putting into those buses, it's like signing the keys back. So.
That's a great, that's a point.
Yeah, that is a good point. So we moved that. I think that was just in one of the-
Yeah, I don't like that, that, with fifty percent or better tires and brakes.
Yeah, I would, I would, yeah, I would take that out. Take that out.
Strike it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's just normal wear.
Yeah, totally. What page is that on? Seven?
Well-
Those were my, those were my observations and stuff, and I, I apologize, I just got this earlier, but I guess.
You could, you could replace that, just put down reading limits. That's a better terminology.
Yeah, I think you could just get rid of the whole of the verb.
Just like we should get rid of it.
I'm not even, just, just to play devil's advocate, I don't even, I'm not sure I even care if it's within the legal limit, because they're taking it back, and they're clearly gonna replace the tires and brakes before they sell it to someone or lease it to somebody. So as long as we standard fifteen thousand mile limit.
Depends on what they agree with, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are, those are excellent points, and we really appreciate it.
My question is that we have already advertised that the bid document is gonna be available.
Yeah.
So if I understood all of your points.
Yeah.
Um, the two changes that we have agreed to make is to remove that with fifty percent or better tires and brakes, and to change the mileage-
To fifteen.
To fifteen thousand.
And to remove the purchase option.
Right?
We're gonna remove the purchase option.
And remove, and we're gonna take on the purchase option, yeah.
Marty's gonna check the specs to make sure we're getting the right buses.
And we're gonna add alts for mileage and, and loaners, right?
As an option, we'd like to know, yeah. Right, so, so the two-
Well, the loaner would be part of it. It's an alternative, yeah.
The, the two options beyond the base contract, the base bid contract, would be, one, how much would it cost to get unlimited mileage? And two, how much would it cost to get loaners during warranty periods?
So we're not removing the, um-
Oh, I thought we were removing the mileage question.
No, I didn't think we were.
We're removing the unlimited mileage and putting in the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, okay, so we are. So we're just putting in fifteen.
Go with fifteen thousand lease and base.
Well, we don't wanna ask whether, what the cost-
And ask what it would cost for unlimited mileage.
Oh, we are gonna answer that question, okay.
Just, just, yeah, beyond the base contract, fifteen thousand limit, there'd be two options. Tell us how much more would it cost for unlimited mileage?
Exactly.
And how much of anything would it cost to get loaners during warranty or repair periods? So that's-
So my, my question still remains, are we able to supply this document?
Tomorrow.
Based on the changes that have been up to tonight?
Yeah, if the committee agrees to approve with the changes, then we, we're still on, we're still in contract.
Okay, so we don't have to wait for two weeks to come back and-
We're not here in two weeks, are we?
Actually, three weeks.
Okay.
Do you, Kelly, do you have this same document?
I do.
Okay. So you can share it with Marty? But so you can share it with Marty who hasn't seen it, so he needs to go through the specs.
If there's any other things that come up, maybe we'll word this in a way that gives you the latitude to do, just let us know if there's anything else that comes up in Marty's review or something, or whether you're reading the document again. But, um, that's great. So why, I guess we're prepared to take a vote. I just wanna thank you very much, because, um, you know, it's, again, it's the expertise within our school, uh, staff and within our community that, you know, we just probably saved, uh, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars or something by just, been doing some really sensible things. So, do we have a, a motion?
A motion to accept the invitation for bid release of seventy-seven passenger type D flathead school, school buses, front engine, for number of buses leased, seven, with the mileage of fifteen thousand per year, removing and editing, removing the lease-to-buy option.
And fifty percent?
And striking fifty percent or better tires and brakes.
Yes.
And adding options. The, the alternate options. Good on that.
Yeah, what about the loaner for out-of-service warranty?
Well, we'll vote for this, and then say, for second one, our second item, we'll vote on.
So those three are the key points.
Yeah, those are the key points. They're very good ones.
I'll second it.
Oh, you second? Jane got it.
Okay, all in favor?
I, Harry Bulger.
Hi, Paul Schubert.
I, Gina Stino. I, Sleepy Lee Lee.
Hi, Paul Nivani. And then we need, so it's passed. Now we need a motion to, uh, enhance the, the contract?
Make a motion to ask for options of unlimited mileage for prior lease of the seven buses as voted on previously on the loan. Oh, we can vote on that.
And the cost for the loan.
And, uh, additional option of loaner availability.
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor? No call vote?
Yeah, I, Gina Stino.
I'm Mary Bulger.
Hi, Paul Nivani. A lot of hard work culminating tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
I think we're happy to be.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Is your last name spelled H-O-L-S?
H-O-S-T.
Oh, H-O-S-T, yeah.
Okay.
You're opposed.
Approval of the floor.
Those buses.
We're done with buses? Great. Thanks a lot. Thanks for staying so late. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the floor replacement agreement, we are bordering one hour behind schedule. Sorry.
Miles to go before we sleep.
We can sleep here. No.
All right, so we're asking the committee to approve the west floor covering and kind of cohesive contract floor replacement.
And you recommend?
It's a, it's a similar, similar contract that we did with the first phase of the floor, and it's just, it's a different vendor, though. We had, um, Continental floor on the first time, this is west floor covering.
Okay, so you vetted it, you think it's good?
This is from the attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, he's helped.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the west floor flooring, excuse me.
Oh, sorry, we have to ask for a motion. You're out of line. Can we please have a motion?
Yes, I have a freaking motion. Okay, to approve the west floor covering motion, um, contract.
For floor replacement.
For floor, um, replacement of the cohesive.
We have a second.
I'll second.
And I assume, because it's a money-related, we have a roll vote.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Paul Schubert.
I, Gina Stino. Sorry, I'm tired.
So you've, hi, Paul Nivani?
She idled.
Hi, Helen. Okay. So it's, passage five, passage five.
So can you all sign it?
We all have to sign it?
Yes, please. And then I bring it back to the, our town finance director to sign it to make sure the funds are there. And then I have the attorney sign it.
Bots better be there.
It should be there, yes.
We've been here for four hours.
Just a project that don't go away.
It's okay. Davidson is-
Moving on to communication.
Okay, communicate, I went to the school constabulary in high school, but what we talked about is what the principal talked about today, the school improvement plan. So you've heard pretty much what she talked about.
Thank you.
And I already gave my comments, you know, um, to what I brought up at the school constabulary, I brought up with her, uh, with the principal, um, um, comment. So that's what they were really focusing mainly on in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's an alternative energy committee meeting that I am not available for tomorrow night, so, yeah. I, I don't think it's, it's a key meeting for us for ten, so. And, oh, the other thing was the, uh, um, the, John, John Smith, Sam Smith. Yes, uh, Superintendent Contalde and I have been working on it. The, all the schools are on board, and, you know, we're doing as best we can because the school year is gonna end and doesn't give us a whole lot of time, but they're gonna do some projects.
Right, and I've collected from two principals to send to Howie.
Just keep sending to Howie stuff, so I'm not-
Okay, then I will wait for the third. No problem.
Yeah, and when you get the third, send it to him.
Okay.
Any new communication, I don't know, just important, I have nothing to mention.
I'm gonna be, uh, serving as the C-TAC liaison last night, so, or liaison, so they had a little meeting last night, which they happily can have me to.
That was last night.
So, so that's a substitute. Mary will now be, uh, taking what was Paul's role going forward.
And that's already been corrected on the sheet that you all got, if you noticed.
Right, right.
Um, Jane, and I did, um, put a contact email into Sarah McSweeney, who will be the president of the P S O, asking if you could also be on the emails.
Great, thank you.
I haven't gotten them either, so I'm hoping it draws some memory.
Good.
Oh, and I forgot about the Board of Elder Affairs. It, you know, we had the groundbreaking at the senior center. It's really going well. It'll be done by December, but if you go by there, you can see, you know, it's in really good, it's definitely, um-
Coming along.
Yes, coming along, great. That's the big thing at the Board of Elder Affairs.
Uh, we wanted to, I think there were two items. Uh, one is just as a policy matter, I think it's already an established policy, but we wanted to reiterate the, um, the need for, uh, communications, uh, other than, uh, you know, parenting and things that we, uh, we as a committee should be going through, um, Barbara, or through the, or through our, through our own committee before communicating with, um, principals, supervisors, teachers, and other staff members, and, um, just to keep streamlined communications going through.
Well, unless it, unless it applies to our children.
That's what I said, right?
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that.
Except for parenting related to our own kids or whatever.
The school committee is not gonna parent, no. Unless you want to.
And, um, and then I guess the topic's not reasonably anticipated, uh, not reasonably anticipated by the chairman for eight hours in advance of meeting. We have at least one.
We have one. It's gonna require discussion and a vote.
Um, just can I ask, um, Mrs., you know how the internal scholarships went?
Oh, it went great. Yeah, I really enjoyed participating in that.
Cool.
Yep.
Because Paul and I normally have done that, but I had to work that day.
That's exciting.
Yeah, we've done it in record time.
Yes, and are, do we have a school committee member who's gonna be giving out anything at the senior meeting?
Typically, um, someone from a school committee gives out, uh, if-
The board.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can be there.
When is that? June twelfth?
Yeah. Yeah, I've been there in the past to do it for us, but I can't be there.
Yeah, I'm going to be there, so I can do it.
That's, uh, June twelfth, which is.
I have it missed.
Senior night.
Thursday?
June twelfth, right.
Yeah.
Six thirty.
I, I can deal with it, okay, yes, okay.
I'll be, I'm hoping, yes.
At what time does that start?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, uh, and where is it?
Auditorium.
Auditorium. Okay.
Yeah, it's very nice.
It's hot out for school.
I think it's sometimes nickel, yeah.
It's a Nichols Award.
Nichols Award?
The Nichols.
Really nice, light Nichols Award.
Okay.
N I C H O L S.
Yeah, is that a?
As opposed to N I C K.
The scope committee has to decide.
Okay, yeah, exactly.
Just, yeah, because, is that a scope meeting?
Yes.
How much is it for?
It's minimal.
Of like, still, it's nice.
And that starts at six?
Six thirty.
It's at twelve o'clock, isn't it?
Okay. Great, um, uh, the next item?
We don't have any exact session.
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
I would just, um, suggest, because I've presented to scholars before, you should get there at six and report to the guidance conference room.
Guidance.
Because then you'll get, they will assign seats, if you're talking, it's great in the office.
Thank you.
So you don't have a seat on stage.
You'll have a seat on the stage with all the other presenters and you'll get a program, so you know what order, when you're supposed to.
Actually, the presenters are now in the audi- audience.
Oh, oh, that's right, they're in the audience.
And students are on stage instead.
Oh, that's great.
Oh, okay.
It's really hot up there.
Yes.
But it should be a check, it should be something that's like presented to you so and so for the Nichols Award.
Okay.
With respect, from the, from the script.
Okay, that's great.
There's usually something to read there, it's not.
Make it up, all right. I'll be calling all of you before.
There'll be, there'll be like a, a menu of all the different awards, and it will give a little bit of background typically on what each award is. So when you get up there to read the Nichols Award, you can state what it's, what it's given for.
Great, thanks, okay. So this is a new topic that just, uh, I guess came up in the last couple of days here?
Why did it just come up?
Uh, because we've, we've had some extenuating circumstances with some of our families, uh, in trying to make some very difficult decisions. At the time, we were doing our budget, this was not a topic of discussion. In the last couple of weeks, it has been a topic of discussion, and we have a number of students in the last two weeks who have had IEP meetings, but really only, what was it, Monday we sat, Monday afternoon at four o'clock, we sat and, uh, met as a, a group, the leadership, uh, central office to talk about this. We have a number of students, we have two students in this district currently. As of the last, uh, couple of weeks, we were suspecting and came to fruition that we really feel we're not able to meet the students' needs. As a result, families have been spoken to in terms of looking at alternative placements outside of the community. And as you know, I feel very strongly about students not leaving our community if possible for a school that would have some specialized programming. Well, one, because the students have to do the reverse commute and it's long and they have to get up early. And as a result, they're days along and it cuts them off in the community in the afternoon. It doesn't allow them to participate with their friends, it doesn't allow them to do some of the activities of their friends if they're out, because they sometimes.
Sorry.
Oh, no worries.
It's okay.
Everybody's awake now. It, it means sometimes our students don't come back into the community till four, sometimes five o'clock in the afternoon. It really denies them access to their cohort of peers that they've been with. And so some of the families have been truly struggling with what they should do with their children as they head into middle school. And is there a way that we could preserve their opportunities to have their children remain in the district? And I am speaking and addressing specifically two students. And when we look at the price of the tuition, although that is not the driving reason, but we started to think, what would allow us to make this work for kids, to keep them in district? So that they can remain an integral part of the social, uh, fabric here, be a part of the culture, continue to maintain their friends and grow in a community that ultimately, as I spoke to some seniors recently, said that this is one of the most supportive places and they were so glad to be able to grow up here. And I was thinking, how do we bring those students to be seniors in this district and experience those very same things our seniors who are now leaving can talk about? And so Ms. Malani couldn't be here today because, uh, she is out sick, uh, but she was really promoting this and this is exactly what I have done before. We look to see if we could establish a proposal for a language-based learning intensive instruction. This is really broken out in, in great detail as to what we're looking for. We know there's been a lot of discussion about what do we do with students who are struggling with reading, who need more intensive multisensory approaches to reading and to the language arts, which is the foundation particularly at middle school for allowing them to access all of their curriculum in their textbooks. And so we came up with a proposal to the committee, hoping that you would agree with us that this would be the right thing to do, that we would supply a teacher who's not only certified in special education and specialized in learning disabilities, but also has a background in teaching reading, specifically certified in a program like Wilson Reading, which is one of the initiatives that the CPAC group has been asking us to do. And so as a result, we haven't actually been able to share this with anybody except for the committee tonight and in fairness to the committee, because these parents are now being asked to make decisions by some of these schools as soon as the next five to seven days. And we know we won't be meeting again till the twenty fifth. We feel that supplying a teacher with this kind of a credentialing will run us probably between seventy and seventy-five thousand dollars. But in addition to servicing the two students who absolutely need the service, we have three additional students who can use the service that we feel will provide a, as I put, as benefits, it would allow us to build capacity in a district that hasn't had capacity, offering children to stay in the district and grow with their peers through graduation with opportunities that haven't existed prior to this. And to give them the opportunity to be active members for the life in the culture of the district. The third benefit is obviously there is a cost effective needs to doing this if we're not putting children in transportation, which is very costly, as well as the tuition that often won't meet thresholds for reimbursement through circuit breaker. But the real thing and the real purpose to me is that we owe it to our children, we owe it to the students to try to find a way to keep them here in the district. And because these parents have really been pushed to the max in the last ten days to try to make some hard decisions for their children and like anybody, angst, they don't really want to see their children leave the district, but they also are grappling with the fact that children need some very specialized instruction we have yet to offer them.
We don't have anybody in six through eight who do this?
No.
We have somebody in the high school, right?
Who's not, none of our teachers have this credentialing that would allow them to do.
The Wilson?
The Wilson.
I thought you trained some.
We have not trained anybody yet.
What did you do when you were here, remember that song? She didn't do.
I didn't get to do it, the teachers withdrew.
Oh, they did, I never knew they withdrew. Did, did everybody know that?
Yeah.
So where was I spacing out?
You might have been traveling.
You were on a trip.
I'm, I'm. So, um, how, do, we don't have any teachers who are trained in the Wilson in the whole school district?
We have somebody down at the elementary level who has background, but they don't have the certification to be at the middle school.
And how about Orton Gillingham, we don't have anybody?
Um, I believe we have somebody who would be Orton Gillingham, but wouldn't have the background to do the learning disability piece. We, we have, we're mixed, we, everybody has a little piece of something, something in the district, but nobody has all of the credentialing that we're looking for.
Got it, because we have some regular, we have some non-special ed teachers who are trained in Orton Gillingham, but they're not special ed teachers, got it. What, um, across what grades?
Six through eight.
Six through eight, okay, so what about elementary school children who need the same types of support?
We have to look to extend that for next year, but for this year, we're looking for the middle school because it's such a critical time for students and, and we're really working hard not to have the students leave because we know frequently when they leave at middle school, they don't return for high school, it's a rare day.
Okay. And is this going to be like a full-time position, um, that will be ongoing?
Yes. Yes, one FTE.
Right, because, uh, and do we have other students coming through, like in the elementary, that will benefit from this when they rise up to six grade?
Yes, but answering what Mrs. Stino just said, we'd like to find a way to push it down into the elementary school because if we're able to capture kids at the elementary school.
Right.
They won't have the need in the middle school.
Correct, correct.
And it would be great to be able to push it into the elementary school September of two thousand fifteen and begin a program there so that as they finally got to middle school, we, that person in the middle school wouldn't have to be used in such a way.
I have another question, um, are people certified K through eight for this?
Are some teacher, yeah, yes, some teachers are certified K through eight.
Really?
Some teachers are only certified K, the early childhood.
Is that hard to find somebody who's certified K through eight, or is K through five and six through ten, uh, twelve?
I have all of those certifications, believe it or not.
Okay.
I really do.
That's why.
I'm not doing the class, obviously, but I know those people are out there because other districts have those very teachers. So they clearly exist.
Well, we had an ex-school board person who's certified, I believe, that's, but she's special ed and, uh, she's a, uh, no, Wilson, uh, well, maybe Wilson.
Orton Gillingham.
She's Orton Gillingham, Lindo Snowdell, but I don't, I, I think she, what grade does she go?
She's elementary school. And she's retired.
Right.
So that, that plays into it as well, so we.
All those retired people can only work part-time, yeah.
So many hours.
Otherwise, they lose their retirement.
Right. And there's a percent for day work.
Is that okay if I take a question? Where are we in terms of the, what do we have, five faculty that are retired? We have. Six. Six. Where are we in terms of, are all those positions going to be filled? And at what point? Capacity? And where does that leave us? All right.
Financially.
And if the money that we're looking at is money that's been dedicated to the students that would be going out of district. So we're just trading.
We'd have to pay, we'd have to use it out of district anyway.
It'll come out of special ed, out of district tuition to keep them in.
Okay.
You know, the cost is there either way, but I think the best way to go is, as Laura says.
Right. So you can transfer that. But we're not paying the transportation and on top of those two individuals that we know would not be with us in the fall, we can add three additional students in for support, which means potentially those students won't need to be considered.
Question, uh, how do we know the parents will go for this?
Because they have been advocating to us, this is their desire.
So they'll, okay.
I, I know in both parents.
This will meet their needs.
This will meet their needs.
Is it right that the primary driver, like you were kind of saying, is that the, from their perspective, is they want to keep the kids, uh, integrated in the system and not have them be isolated?
In the fabric of cohesive, they want their student, their children or students now, because they're young adults, they're moving to that young adult, they want their students to be able to grow up in town and not have the isolation because I can speak from personal experience, you take your, your student out of school, sometimes they are really cut off because of the transportation, the timing, they can't come back and do the afternoon sporting items because they can't get here.
Mm-hmm.
And once they're gone, they're gone and they lose the ties. And I think it's critical that we, we are such a small district and we are such a tight-knit community from what I can see, that we owe it to ourselves to try to really enhance that, to show that we are that kind of community. Um, are you and Laurie confident that, that the addition of this specialist will meet all of their needs? Yes. This was a very hard decision for us, we don't usually, you know, she, she came to me Monday morning and said, I have a four o'clock for you and we have to talk. And then everybody came into the office and we, we talked for about two hours, trying to figure out what was best. But it's the, the passion of the parents that drove us to do that. It wasn't because we, we thought about it and then went to the parents, the parents came to us.
Uh, do you think Mary Buchanan, uh, should, uh, have anything to do with the discussion? Maybe to meet the, the person or have a vote in hiring, some?
Yes, we, we really think that Mary should be a part of the hiring process if this is approved. But why we brought it tonight is as the year is marching on, it's quite late, we're concerned about possible candidates. Uh, we wanted to be able to give solid answers to our parents and so we wanted the opportunity. We, we already have a discussion with Mary ongoing, Mary's coming in next week, uh, to meet with Laurie. So, and she's going to go through the list of everything that has to happen and we're settling on a date of entry for her too because I'm working with her superintendent in terms of trading off some days so that there's transition for everybody because it's only the year.
Okay.
But this is what Mary also does, she specializes in making programs.
And of course, in CPAC and whoever, no one's been involved yet, you'll get everyone involved.
We, we wanted to say something, but we didn't want to say something before we brought it to you.
Right.
In fairness, and I will, you know, definitely go home and, and if this is approved, notify Mrs. Malani and she can make the contact.
Really?
I think so.
We've certainly been asking, CPAC has been asking for programs, but we've been asking for programs for two years and we, we've been very hopeful that something would come up. So this seems to me, to me, it's a no brainer.
I, I think you can't do wrong by saying to students, we will do anything to keep you because you're, you're beloved in the district, you're one of the community. It really sends a huge message to the students as well as to the families.
Within reason.
Well, and also just to play that maybe devil's advocate just for a second, uh, I think I'm, personally I'm in favor of this, but the, the, the person who we hire on the staff stays with us potentially for much longer than the student has the needs.
Yes.
Or, you know, so we're making a decision, uh, that is going to have long-term implications for a midterm, so, you know, issue. So if we're going to do this, we need to probably develop this beyond just the needs that are today, right?
We would, we would grow.
And we can do that by attempting to hire someone with certification from K through eight.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
It's really crucial.
It's huge, hugely important to do that because just like we move a first grade teacher to third grade and a third grade teacher to first grade, when our numbers, you know, ebb and swell, we need to be able to do that with this position also.
Especially because we're in a small school system, it would be financially not a good idea for not, for us to hire anybody who can't handle.
Who can only handle two or three.
It just would not be good. Because if you look at the numbers that, uh, you gave us about, you know, the class sizes in the future, they're going down, okay? I mean, obviously, we're going to be hit for the next three, four years with increases. But after that, you know, it, there's a dividend, so we want to be able to have that flexibility financially.
Right.
And, uh, Mary brought that up, and I think that's really important.
Right, so we would look at somebody who's strictly certified five through twelve, in fact, a lot of, of teachers out there who are in the special education field, excuse me, uh, a lot of them are dual certified, they do K through eight, five to twelve, so they have, you know, the pre-K through twelve cert going on.
Right, because we really don't need six through twelve, because what we have going on is for the, you know, like you, um, what, um, uh, Jean mentioned, we want to get them younger down the line.
Absolutely.
We're not always.
No, then the tour.
We don't need high school.
Right, exactly.
Our high school is in good shape, right?
Right, that's why I'm saying if we start the middle school next year and we support those students who are coming in who didn't have the support earlier and then the following year, push it into the elementary school so as they come up.
I think there's a critical need at the elementary level and I think that we can see that in who's at the middle school and who has issues there, I just, there's a lot of issues.
If, if the committee would like, and I, I certainly wouldn't answer today because I think a lot of it is really potentially who is hired in replacing those who have retired. I don't know what that is going to look like financially, but if there are monies left over from that at all and the committee wants me to come back, I would talk about looking at the elementary level if you think it's comfortable funding something like that for the fall. But I don't want to answer yes now and not have the money.
No, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is if you have the right certification, you can move people back and forth.
Right.
When the needs change. No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if you have the right certification, you can move people back and forth when the needs change.
Right. Oh, no, I understood that. I did. I just didn't know if you were anxious to see a program in the fall at both levels.
Uh, no, not to. Not necessarily. No, 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 not necessarily right now.
Okay, that's fine.
And perhaps that person would be able to help some of the children at the elementary school level also if there were gaps in the schedule.
Yeah.
You need to set it up so that it's not a change in work conditions, if that, I realize that this, so that it's not a change in working conditions. To hire somebody for sixth grade and seventh grade support and then ask them to go to fourth grade because there are a couple of kids there who have critical needs. So it's all in how you, how you set up the employment. Correct, because we don't wanna violate the board, I mean, the faculty contract.
Right, the CVA.
Yes, we have to be careful about that.
So I have a question. So this would be a position that is special education earmarked towards the middle school with spe-, uh, special education Wilson reading potential, right?
The certification would be for the, the desk mass certification as a special education teacher and then additionally, you would have the Wilson certification.
Additionally. So as a special education teacher, they may be certified for a given group of classes six, six to eight or one, one through five, depending on what the certification level is.
Like K to eight.
I think it's a great idea. We were trying to build internally a long time, special education, because it, I really think that the biggest benefit is having the child stay in district. Because it is, it's a good district. It's, it's great to not have to travel two hours on a bus. So I'm very much in favor. I, I look at this as the, the starting block and maybe potentially expanding it down the road if we have the need, you know, setting up our own special ed learning program that's earmarked for educational language, you know, length and reading.
And if it's solid, that's right. If it's solid enough, I mean, things that happen, granted, we belong to the collaborative, we use collaborative programs, but sometimes we look to each other if we have a singleton in the district. And we try to see if there is an opening somewhere else close by. If there's a proper fit, it might be that somebody has somebody next door and wants to see if we can help service them. And that might be the kind of relationship they have, but for the time being, we have to certainly work with our own students first. And, and the fact that the parents are so impassioned, trying to find a way to have their students stay in the district, I think it's critical that we do everything we can, exhaust all possibilities before we say no.
Um, just one more question. Does it have to be Wilson? Can you say Orton Gillingham too? Or would you prefer Wilson?
Uh, we would very much prefer the Wilson.
Because?
Because it moves much more quickly at that level.
Okay, okay. Um, do we have to vote on it?
Yes, because it's a new position.
Yes, because it's money, adding an employee. And it's money, so we have to say the yes.
Yes.
And are the funds then coming from what otherwise would be special ed funds?
Yes, but still, we have to say.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we need a motion to, uh, approve.
I'll make a motion. To, uh, for the proposal for a language-based learning intensive instructor for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in giving, um, the superintendent. Um, right, to start the search for that.
I'll second it.
Paul seconded, I guess, for fourteen.
Okay, yeah.
And then, uh, roll call vote, please.
I, Mary McGoldrick.
I, Paul Schubert.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Helen Lee.
I, Paul Nibane. So passes. Good luck.
Thank you. I think parents will be released with your decision.
We make a motion to end this.
And so we now.
Have to executive session.
We are gonna make a motion, go into executive session in order to discuss strategy, expect a collective bargaining or litigation?
You will be coming back up. You will be back up into open session.
And we will become a backup. To open session, okay.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session, conduct a strategy session, preparation, negotiating, not, uh, just discuss strategy, expect a collective bargaining or litigation for the purpose. Then coming out into open session and.
Adjourn.
And we can't do it in.
Why can't we adjourn to the executive session? Because we can't, cause you have to come out here and take a vote.
Um, do we go in the other room?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
We need to talk.
Do we have a second?
I have nothing.
We all said?
Have we seconded?
Seconds.
Okay, and then we vote?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
I, Helen Lee.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Paul Schubert.
I, Mary McGoldrick.
I, Paul Nibane.